Goodness, everybody. We are ready to get rolling. First up is Steve Virginia Financial State House.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council?
Yep.
For the company, we'll come and update council on a similar presentation that they gave to council back in November. The goal with this time is to kind of level set with council before they go into their retreat, and then to seek if there's any additional questions. And talking to yourself, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, the goal is to possibly bring this forward for council's review and consideration for adoption, probably in February, in case council wants to discuss this at their retreat or provide additional feedback at this time.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, I'm David Rose, and I manage the practice at Davenport. My colleague of 20 years, hard to believe, Kyle Alex, and I will present again. Please stop us if there's anything we say that you'd like to see us elaborate on or not certain what we're saying. But we'll move along pretty quickly here. And as the city manager indicated, we were here back several months ago prior to several of you being elected. Congratulations. And so hopefully, this is just a continuation of working with the city. Because again, we know you've got a lot of wood to chop over the next several months and years. A little bit of introduction, some of you may not remember or know Davenport. I'm now in our 26th year at the firm. We're about 160 years old. There is only a few people left from that era. Sometimes it feels that way. The firm is a wonderful place. And Kyle, as I said, has been with me now for 20 years, although he looks like he's about 18. Unfortunately, I do look 64. That's the way it works. We do have a good fortune of working with cities, towns, counties coming from Virginia. By last count, with regard to cities, we work, we're basically about 35 of the 47 cities we're pleased to call advisors. So over the last several months, that last bullet point, we have been working closely, probably about a year now, with your staff. It is an incredibly impressive staff, and I think I want all the, particularly the new council members, to know. And that'll segue into why, in part, you're rated AAA, the highest ratings the city can possibly have. And that's because you have been well-run for many years. There's a lot of institutional memory there. And Patrick and Letitia have doth nothing but continue that progress since they've arrived. So I mentioned, the last time we were here, one of the three national rating agencies is Moody's. It's actually the earliest rating agency. And they were going through a review of all local governments, which they represent several thousand. At that time, we were not sure where they would come out with local governments. But I am pleased to say that they have reaffirmed Virginia Beach's AAA standing. That's the highest you could possibly be. So congratulations. Really, it is not easy to be in that mode. And over the years, I've seen AAA's actually been moving down from that AAA. And they don't like to do that. But again, the way in which you're set up, the way in which you're looking at things, and part of that is the second bullet point. You've had historically financial policy guidelines. They are 30 years old, which means you are actually at the forefront of doing policies. You and the city of Hampton back then, I remember working with them then and now to do policies. And the bottom line is, we're going to recommend today, as the city manager alluded to, that we enhance and update some of those city policies. And Kyle and I will talk a bit more about that. I think what you're going to find is all of the enhancements are actually made to strengthen your overall financial sustainability. And that's important. So we're actually going to tighten up some, add a few, and delete a couple that really are no longer pertinent in the marketplace. So lastly, we also want to talk about some of the new initiatives. The council, as you well know, had the referendum about a little over a year ago now for flood mitigation. That was roughly about $570 million, rounding off that in top of some of the other needs you had. So we did a lot of work, working with staff, and we presented the last time. What's your ability to take all of this on and maybe even some more things, like schools? And so we're going to talk a little bit about that today. It's what we call debt capacity, and we call debt affordability. And we'll, again, give you a little bit of perspective on that. So on the next page there, you can see where you are. There's three national rating agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. And they are the ones that are pertinent to local governments. That said, you're at the very top of all three. And again, we believe that everything we're going to talk about today and have been talking about will make sure that you stay at AAA for all three of those agencies. So a little bit of that overview on the next page. They talk about collectively what your strengths are, and they talk about, again, what could possibly downgrade you from that vaunted status. So you can see here, they talk about you have a growing diverse tax base. They talk about comprehensive financial policies and conservative budget practices. And there's nothing we see that's changing any of that. Everything that we've been doing with you have kept in that mode. And then finally, you're going to see this in a few minutes, the way they look at your overall debts, they call a fixed cost burden, and you'll see what that means. You come out very positively when you're looked at that way versus the national indices. Then again, we can't rely and just rest on our laurels. So they're saying, what could bring this down? What could bring the credit rating down? One of those is what they say, a deterioration of fund balance or liquidity. I want to point out, we're not having any of that right now. But they say if that were to occur, that could lead to a downgrade, a material increase in debt burden. And we are going to talk about doing some more debt. However, it's all about how it's managed, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as well. And then finally, if there were, they say, a contraction in the tax base and weaken residential incomes. Again, there's no sign of that either, but those are three factors that certainly could have a negative impact on your rating. So as we turn to the city, we call it specific challenges. There is, as we say, a robust borrowing program. You've got an adopted capital improvement program. It's a balanced program. And you can see there, there are basically four different, if you would, borrowing programs. The first two fall into what we call tax-supported. That means it's the general fund, overall real estate taxes, other taxes that are citywide that pay for and cover that, including that large flood mitigation approved referendum. And then the other two, the stormwater revenue bonds and water and sewer revenue bonds, you've had those in place for multiple years. Those are actually self-supporting. And what that means is those that actually get the benefits, they actually pay user fees, they actually pay for these bonds. And again, one of the things we're going to do, and it's going to be in front of you over the course of the upcoming overall 2024 fiscal year budget, we'll be talking about some timing and some magnitude of borrowings for these various programs. It's conceivable that not all of them will be done in this upcoming fiscal year. But again, we're going to be working closely with staff to make sure we're borrowing when we need to borrow or we're being very strategic about it. And that's going to be one of the ways that we can manage these kinds of debts. If we do that in our focus, to do it when the dollars are needed, not just to stack up the dollars. That said, if interest rates were to go back to 2% interest rates, we might suggest, you know what? Let's stack up some debt. But we're not there right now. So again, we're very flexible in moving forward. And the last page that I'd like to talk about before turning it over to Kyle is what I mentioned a few moments ago. And that is you've got these self-imposed financial policies. And again, they have kept you in very good stead for years. But typically, every several years, we do like to revisit them. And as a result, these policies go back as early as 1992. They were modified, believe it or not, now about seven years ago. 2016 was six, seven years ago. So we're really in that sweet spot now of saying, okay, let's see how things continue to evolve. We've come basically through the pandemic, and let's look at this going forward. So we're going to recommend a number of changes, and I'm going to turn it over to Kyle to walk you through and then wrap it up. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Happy New Year. Nice to see everyone. So as we continue forward, we'll get to some of those changes in financial policies, but thought we would stop for a second here and just give you an overview of the city's existing debt profile. So talking a lot about the CIP and future things, one of the first things we like to do is say, all right, where do we start? What's the basis that we're starting with? So this page number seven just gives you what is the existing, as David mentioned, tax-supported debt profile. Not water and sewer, not stormwater. This is the tax-supported side. You see it on that page here. It's about 900 million in total. You can see it on that table there. A couple of things I'd point out. Number one, if you look at that graph, you see a nice decline in the payout of that existing debt. That's important. That means you're responsibly paying off the existing debt. That is freeing up capacity for all these various new projects that you, as a council, will want to take on in the future. The second thing I'll point out is, on the right-hand side, there's a payout ratio percentage. That's one of the policies that we're going to recommend you update here in the very near term. What that really does is make sure, again, that the principal amount that is outstanding is paid off in a responsible manner. So you right now pay off about 75% of the principal over the next 10 years. That's a very rapid payout. It's a responsible, good payout. And part of the planning and the policies would be to make sure that we continue to have that rapid, strong payout, both the ratings and to make sure we have capacity into the future. So the next couple pages, just to give you a snapshot, before we update the policies, what do we look like relative to existing policies, meaning those that were put in place in 1992, as David mentioned? And I'll tell you, in the next four pages, the city is in compliance with all those policies. So as we're talking about updating things, we're talking about changing things. We're not doing that because we're somehow out of compliance with anything. We're really doing that to update, modernize, and bring the city's policies in line with what is with a modern expectation from the rating agencies. We'll just say that at the outset. We're in good shape with all the city's policies. So the first policy, debt service to expenditures. You can see there you have a 10% policy. This is basically what proportion of the budget annually goes to make debt service payments? You have a 10% policy. You're right now at about 6%. So you're well in line with the policy, and you have capacity. Second policy here, net debt to assessed value. This is basically measuring what is that tax-supported debt outstanding relative to the size of our tax base, which is our primary revenue source? You see you have a 3.5% policy in that red line. You're at a fraction of that, a little bit over 1%. And so you're in very good shape. And we're going to show you what this looks like with your CIP built in. You'll continue to be in good shape. Next page, debt per capita. This is one that, when those policies were originally instated in 1992, was used relatively widely across the market. And nowadays, as we look some 30 years later, it really just isn't used anymore. There's no inflationary factor kind of built into there. And so for that reason, even though we are in compliance right now, we're going to recommend moving away from that debt per capita. The rating agencies don't look at it within their formal criteria, and the credit markets just don't really sort of use that. I believe in debt per capita, that was last updated back in 2016. I think that one was updated in 2016. Yeah. On the next page then, debt to per capita income. Again, had some interesting features back in the 90s when this was put in place, but other measures have been sort of overtaken this in terms of the affordability, which is really what this is measuring. So we're in good shape, wrote the policy. It just isn't used in the marketplace, so we're going to move away from it. We'll talk about what those are going to look like into the future. Before we do that, we'll give you a couple pages. One thing the rating agencies do a lot, we think is very, very helpful, is to compare where we stand in Virginia Beach relative to other national AAA cities. Again, we have those AAA highest possible credit ratings. So something the rating agencies do is they're going to compare us, when they're looking at our finances, to what other national cities look like. But we also took a little snapshot and said, what do we look like relative to AAA cities in Virginia? First slide here, 10% of full value, we're at, again, about 1.4%. You can see the national AAA cities about 1.1. The Virginia AAA counties about 1.3. Virginia AAA cities about 1.7. So we're very much in line with all those AAA medians. And you can see the breakout there down at the bottom. Debt service to expenditures. Again, we're at about 6.3% as we stand right now. We're going to monitor that very closely going forward. But if you take a look at that relative to, again, those dark green bars, the national AAA cities is almost double that median here. So what that tells us is relative to other very highly rated cities across the country, you're in very, very good shape with that particular ratio. Page 14, David mentioned the unaside fund balance. And while it's not technically a debt policy, it is one of the major, important financial criteria that each of those three credit rating agencies look at. So while though it's not debt-specific or it's not capital-specific, having a very strong fund balance, good reserves, is a critical and very, very important under component to making sure we maintain those AAA ratings. We wanted to show that to you. It certainly will be a part of your budget process as you see that. So right now, you're at that 13.5% range, in line with the national average. You can see it's 16.4. National AAA cities, AAA counties, a little bit lower, 11.2. And Virginia cities at about 17.8. So we're in good shape there. We don't see that deteriorating, but it is very important that we keep an eye on that as we're contemplating and thinking about the capital program. So as we move to page 15, all of that is some background. Now, what does the picture look like going forward? And again, as David mentioned, working very closely with your budget staff, with your finance staff, which we appreciate, giving you a snapshot here of what that tax-supported borrowing program looks like over the next, you know, five to eight fiscal years. For a little bit of perspective, historically, you've been issuing in and around 800 million within that five-year window, if you go back in time. So one of the changes we see going forward, and this is driven a lot by the flood referendum, but not just the flood referendum, is we see the level of that issuance being substantially higher than it's been in the past. So if we're looking at right now around 1.75, kind of round that off, call it about, you know, a billion, 1.8 billion going forward, that's one of those components that, as we're updating the policies, we're watching and planning, we are talking about as a city taking on more than we have in relatively recent history. You can see the breakout of that at the bottom with the charter bonds at about 538 million, the public facility revenue bonds, both of those historically have supported your general city capital projects, your schools. And obviously, the flood component with the 567 that was authorized is a fairly substantial increase to all that. And so all of that has been factored into the planning that you'll see going forward. Page 16, just to talk for a second about that flood mitigation. We know a lot of work has been done with your public work staff. Jacob's Engineering has been doing a fair amount of that as well. And so what has been factored into the numbers you'll see in here, and will continue to be updated as more information is known, is not just the 567 million, but we're planning proactively on the front end for the likelihood of cost estillations there. So we've built into these numbers about a 30% contingency. That's not to say that's the exact right number, but trying to proactively understand that isn't in this environment, post-pandemic and everything that's gone on with supply chains, et cetera, it is very likely that the cost for, whether it's the flood projects or any of the other capital projects, is going to be higher than the estimates that were done two years ago. So we've proactively put some of those in there, and this will continue to be updated as new and better information comes out. And so one more thing at the bottom of this page, a way to manage and mitigate that is to think about, as David mentioned, some different ways of financing the capital projects. So interim financing, whereby we're borrowing more on a just-in-time basis, being a little more strategic about when we take on the debt, as opposed to taking on too much too quickly, because the timing of spending for whether it's the flood project, schools, or anything else is just taking longer than it has historically. And so with that getting to updating the city's debt policies, we've said some of this already in terms of your existing policies and you being as a city in the forefront of that since the early 90s. That certainly helped you get to those AAA credit ratings. And so what we're going to talk about in the next couple pages is what we're recommending with updating those debt policies. Debt to assessed value continues to be very important. Debt service to expenditures continues to be very important. So we're going to recommend we keep those in place like you have them. We mentioned debt per capita, debt to income not used anymore, so those go by the wayside. But we are going to introduce, in the fourth bullet point here, a policy on total liability. So something that the rating agencies and the credit markets have been more focused on is not just what is the debt as we think about it, but also what are there other long-term liabilities? That's pension, that is what's called OPEB, other post-employment benefits, and looking at that all holistically. And so we're going to recommend a policy to you that takes all of that into account. That takes us to page 18. In terms of what the specific recommendations are in terms of those debt policies. And again, no changes here versus what we talked about in November for those that saw this. So again, debt to assessed value. Keep that policy, but actually bring that in a little bit. So your tax base has grown very nicely. It's continuing to grow. And so we think we have room there to actually make that a little bit more conservative. Still give you, as a city, capacity to make the investments that you need to. But that's going to be a positive from the rating agencies, to bring that level from 3.5 down to 3. Debt service to expenditures arguably the most important of all these. You have a 10% policy. You're in good stead. Maintain that policy. Third point there, as we mentioned on the prior page, fixed cost. That, again, taking into account the pensions, the OPEB, holistically, look to be no more than 20% of the budget. So you take a step back and say, okay, what does that really mean? We're to make sure that no more than 20 cents out of every dollar in the budget is going to make a debt service payment, a pension payment, or what we call an OPEB payment. You're right now, we'll show you what you look like there, in compliance with that. And that'll be a best practice to watch going forward. Lastly, that payout ratio, making sure we're paying off the principal amount of the debt in a responsible manner, keeping that above 50% is the recommendation in terms of the policy.
Yeah.
Sorry, just really quickly, I saw in other places in the presentation where you had given the national at state here level data for some of those other metrics. And I didn't see that for the fixed costs or the payout ratio. And I would really appreciate just to...
Yeah, we certainly can follow up with some of that in terms of that specifically. Yeah, anything over 25 is really viewed as a problem area. We'll show you where you are in the next couple pages. And we can dig up and, as a follow-up through the manager, send some of those comparative data. But then on page 19, it's important, you're obviously in the budget cycle. You have a retreat coming up, thinking about the CIP. And so I want to give you a picture of what the city looks like with the CIP in a going-forward manner. So done a lot of work to understand how those variables, whether it's flood mitigation, the charter bonds, the public facility revenue bonds that are planned very closely with budget and finance, what do we as a city look like as we make some projections out into the future? We'll say as we do these projections, again, closely with budget and finance, try to err on the conservative side in terms of the assumptions we use. So we use, or excuse me, above-market interest rates when we think about those future bond issues and try and build some contingency in there. So again, debt service to expenditures, how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget are going to make a debt service payment? We have that 10% policy, not recommending that we change that. And what these various colored bars at the bottom are showing us is when we take the existing debt and we take the CIP, including the flood, we continue to be really no higher than 7+% in the future. That's just one of the measurements, but that does tell us, that's arguably the most important of these, bless you, does tell us that even with, again, the flood and the CIP, we're very much in line with the policy and best practices. Second policy, again, you have this in place. The only change we're recommending here is going from 3.5 down to 3. You can see when that is projected out, looking at those various colored bars, you really only get to about 2%. So again, assuming a modest amount of growth in your tax base, about 3% a year and above-average interest rates, you're in good stead relative to that policy. And then to the council member's question in terms of the fixed cost ratio, this is Virginia Beach. We'll look up the comparative and AAA levels for you. But again, that 20% policy, as we do that projection out, we hover no higher than 15%. So we've got sort of that five-percentage-point wiggle room. Contingency, as we think about the planning, is always going to be surprises. We'd like to make sure we're not cutting that too close. But what that really tells you is no more than, in the projections, 15 cents out of every dollar in the budget are going to make either a debt service payment or a payment towards a pension. Lastly, that 10-year payout ratio, really measuring how quickly are we paying off the principal amount? We're to make sure we're not pushing things on to future generations. Put in place a minimum 50% policy, you really drop no lower than 65%. So we really want to keep it above 50%, which is what we're doing here. And that has been the city's practice into the past. So with that, turn it back over to David to wrap things up and take any questions.
Any questions, Mayor and members of council? Yes, Mayor.
Amelia?
Just wanted to just reiterate about the flood mitigation bond. Some people you meet think there's money to be moved, but the water is already been allocated for this time. Yes?
So what we've done already, and thanks to the staff, is they've factored in roughly that 567 plus a growth factor. Because since you even had that referendum, you know, you know, there's been so much inflation that we've tried to, within reason, recognize that there's probably going to be inflation that we don't control. Patrick?
Specifically, council member Ross Haddad. When council passed the question, the question it made between the projects for the first phase, so the money that's allocated right now is supposed to cover the first phase. Obviously, what our financial advisor is telling us right now is that based on the inflation that we're seeing, it may not necessarily cover all that together. And as we build out the program more, we'll bring something back to council for further review and consideration on how we fund the out years of the program. Right now, with our combination of grant dollars received, things are looking in a positive direction. We're able to kind of hold the line with the inflation that we've been seeing.
Thank you.
So just a couple of things, and then I'll just turn to that last page on schedule. What we did, and you may recall seeing this the last time Kyle and I were here, was to say that when we incorporate these policies and follow what we call best practices, we believe that there's even some additional capacity over and above what you've seen. We're not advocating going running out and borrowing more money. That's not what we're saying. But we recognize... saying, but we recognize that there are other needs, competing needs, that are not in the existing approved capital improvement program. And so basically, roughly about $250 million on additional to what we've talked about is there that keeps us within the policies. I think a lot of that ties back to though, exactly how it's borrowed, how fast it's borrowed, but over this roughly, you know, five to seven to 10-year period, we see a solid another quarter of a billion dollars. Lastly, we talk here on that bullet point about the flood mitigation program. Again, a lot of that's going to be the timing of it and the way we approach it. So that is still to come, and I think as the 2024 budget gets finalized and in front of y'all, there'll be elements of how to look at all that. So the last page here is just potential next steps. We're here today on the 17th. Our goal was to brief you and make sure if there's any additional information that you want, we will get back to you as quickly as possible. But the hope is, is that in the next month, at the February meeting, a February meeting, we will get the possibility to move forward with those revised policies, the debt management and other policies that Kyle alluded to. With that in place, the hope and the plan is over that next six to eight weeks, is to incorporate those policies into the city manager's upcoming operating budget as well as the modified rolling CIP program that you've had and continue to have. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity.
Chris, then Barbara.
Thank you for the presentation. To page seven, the city's tax-supported debt currently totals roughly 900 million, and then you have the ratio. Could you provide the city manager with the ratio of the last 10 years, and kind of seeing where we were and how we performed?
So we could certainly get you that going backwards, if you would, the previous five years. So, because we do that sometimes, but we can get that for you.
Gone up, gone down?
Yes. In fact, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman, because one of the things that, and Kyle showed you this, when it came to the total liabilities, the one that we recommend not going above 20%, what you'll notice on that page, if I could, is that we really, even with all of this debt added in that Kyle alluded to, we still really don't move the needle very much from that roughly 15%. And I think that was particularly important, so I just show that everybody again. There it is. So you'll notice there that even with all of that debt being added, that's the expenditures, and then that's the fixed costs that I was alluding to, that you're basically, you know, in that range and you stay about that range even with the high watermark towards the end of the decade.
Hey, Barbara, and then Rosemary.
Well, the presentation that you made skipped the page 17, that was in the original that we got in our packet, and that was the flood mitigation funding strategy page, which to me is one of the most important ones in here. And of course, you talk about that the initial revenue source may not be sufficient, and we've got to have a very thorough and careful review of projected flood expenditures and so forth. And I see this as critical this year because we've got this bond referendum promise that we had committed to our people, and within 10 years, and one of those years is already gone, and we're looking at this inflation factor. And I think the last presentation we got from Jacobs was that, whoops, we maybe have a problem here. But then when we are looking at other potential things that we would love to do and are very important, such as building new schools, how are we going to be able to make decisions in this budget cycle that accommodate these unknowns at this point? I mean, it looks to me like this is a budget cycle where we're getting a lot of trouble if we aren't very careful, and we don't yet know what these bond referendum projects are really going to cost. I know you say you're looking at it closely, so how are we going to deal with it?
Well, Patrick, you want to start first, maybe, and I'll just, I can come right behind you if you want.
Yeah, so I think Councilman Bradley, as a...
Now, that's our Dr. Ross Hammond's question. It is something that we're paying attention to, it is concerning. What we're seeing right now is that we're able to kind of hold the line a little bit. I mean, we have received a significant amount of grant dollars, and that's been able to kind of keep us on in par with inflation. But what we're going through right now is that we're evaluating all the CIPs of issues in all of the markets, and we're working on figuring out how best to address keeping the projects on time and within budget as part of our recommendation for the budget to be considered by council. It's going to be difficult, council's going to be faced with a very different things as well.
In the five-year forecast, assessments are going up around 7%. So in one of the strategies or ways that we navigate keeping the cost and keeping the CIP in line is thinking about what portion of that assessment does a city want to absorb as part of the budget in order to kind of hold the CIP forward in addition to general city operations. I mean, it is something that council's going to have to fully vet and consider. I mean, I, to me, I probably, one of the best examples, the best ways to move forward with this is kind of take this information that you have in play here as you think about where things could fit. Like, for example, we know that there's schools, there's aquarium needs, and there's parks and recreation needs. Davenport is saying there's roughly around $250 million in the out years, that could change depending on a myriad of different decisions council makes, or even what the economy does to us, may make it less, it may make it more. I think ideally, probably the best is for council to consider that and kind of prioritize where they want to be and what products they want us to move forward with, and then we can figure out how that works financially and bring something to you all for future review and consideration. I wouldn't panic too much on the bond referendum projects at this time, they're moving in the right direction. We do have funding in place to get us going, we're going to ring the alarm as soon as possible we get to a place where we have to make any policy decisions about moving money from other projects or moving money from other programs, or if we need another funding source. But it is something that is high on mind, we have a good team with Jacobs, our budget and financing, and also Davenport, that's paying attention to this 24/7/365. So it's a long-rounded question, response to your question, Councilmember Henry, but just really just to let you know, it's a multi-pronged approach, we do have, it's keeping us up in that, we're paying attention to it, and if we get to a place where we have to make a decision, if council has to make a decision, we'll get the information to you.
Yeah, I would underscore, and you could tell Patrick's been living with this very closely, because his answer was quite comprehensive. No, really, he's spent an inordinate amount of time, so I would like to underscore that as well. We feel like you're actually coming from a position of strength, not weakness, but at the same time, the balance there is there's not an unlimited credit card. I think that's the takeaway. I think there is clearly capacity to do these things, to do them over the five to 10 years. There's nothing here that threw us for a loop or a curve. The approach that Kyle and I are thinking about, which is really what we call just-in-time financing, meaning we'll borrow those monies somewhat in parallel with when the monies were actually needed to be spent. So let's talk about schools, if there is three different schools that are out there as possibilities, they're not all going to get spent in 12 months. That's not realistically what we're seeing, particularly in this supply chain environment, particularly in this environment with limited numbers of workforce out there, it's so stretched. So we want to make sure we time it, aside from other things, yes?
Well, I think we've always sort of had as a policy that we would have the full funding identified before we committed to a project.
Absolutely, so...
So that's just in time and only doing part at the time, doesn't violate that?
No, so I think we're talking about, and I appreciate your asking that question. So when we say just in time, what we're talking about, and your staff has done a great job of saying, let's identify the actual full amount of dollars needed for a project. That will be done upfront before any project would be moving forward. However, just because we identify, just go with me, let's say a project's $50 million, we will identify the sources for that and determine what the cash flows are to pay for that $50 million, but it doesn't mean that we need to borrow necessarily all $50 million at front. We might, and there's some changes, again, a lot of variables occur, but as Patrick said, part of all of this is to really try to weigh what you have as priorities, what you see as the most important things. And then for us, and you know, I've been doing this long enough, Patrick knows from the days we were together in Cincinnati, will tell you if there's more than you can bite off, or more that you're taking too much risk. We're not shy about doing that, better safe than sorry, but we will definitely have, any project that gets green-lighted, we'll make sure that there's a, again, there's the funding source for that, the timing may take a few years, but that funding source will be there from the get-go.
As long as we don't have another pandemic in the middle of that time.
Well, you know, and a good point.
Must be optimistic, Mrs. Hammond.
Realistic.
Well, and you know, and that's a good point, so you know, I must admit, this is my first pandemic, I'm old but not that old, you know, it was 1918, but we've lived through three or four really severe market downturns. And you think about it, the most recent one being 2010, 2009, 2010. So part of why I think we look at and talk about your excess capacity is to build that cushion in. I mean, selfishly, I'd like to make sure we keep that cushion to some degree so that if there is, whether it's another pandemic, or God forbid, something else happens that we haven't contemplated, we've got that flexibility. You know, you look at the state or the Commonwealth, one particular year, they're flush with money, another particular year, they may be cutting into school funding. So I think we've got to be flexible, not to assume that the next five to 10 years are all going to be great years. So that's part of our job.
Rosemary.
You said that we had about $250 million of debt capacity, but...
Over and above what you've already identified for the various capital projects, as Kyle alluded to, roughly that 1.8 billion over that 10-year period.
So intended that that was a credit card, I don't think we want to max it out. So what's the buffer that we should have in consideration? I mean, do we want to spend up to 200 million, so we have 50 in reserve, or you know, what's...
I think that's going to depend on Patrick and the staff and what their comfort level is with cash flows and key revenue sources. So I think we want to take their perspective and then incorporate, let's say, our thoughts about how maybe to borrow some funding. Because the other thing that I should have said, and I didn't make it clear, which was my fault, was that we may go about recommending doing projects, but we're not recommending all of them at one time. So if we have relief valves, so for example, as I said to your council colleague right across from you, we'll make sure that there is ample dollars if you go forward, let's say, on some $50 million project. However, if we also see that, let's say, to your point, not maximizing that credit card, we might say, you know what, let's build in some cushion of timing, that if some things do fall and we don't expect it, things could slow down, they might slow down for a year or two, that type of thing. So I think we've got the, sort of, I'll call it, the ability to not be just all in and not have sort of a life raft, something to pull to, I think that's what we're thinking. Yes, Patrick?
Mayor and Vice Mayor and members of council, that 250 is based on scenarios and assumptions, those scenarios and assumptions can change, right? Council may take more property tax assessment one year than 3%. We may see changes in the market from a 5% interest rate for debt to something like 3.5% or something lower than that, that can bring that plus or minus. You know, so it's, I think the best way to go about it is that council lays out its priorities, and then once we get that, we will work on scenarios to allow y'all to achieve that vision in line with the debt policies that you all adopt, and also in keeping with the goal of maintaining flexibility, like you said, or if the next emergency thing happens, that you always have the bandwidth and the space to do the people's work.
We're seeing these things, these projects, costing more and more. I mean, at one time, you could build, you could go to elementary school for 11, 12 million, and now it's going to cost 65, 67 million. You know, we've got the aquarium is, what, 200 million, and 250 million may sound like a lot until you look at all, like what we saw last week, and how much parks and rec need, Bayside High School is close to 200 million. I mean, that's, that 200 million could get eaten up pretty fast, I mean, it could be eaten up in one or two projects. So I do think we have to be really cognizant of that.
As a follow-up to Rosemary, there's a statement on page five, it's pretty significant. The city's undertaken a historic amount of capital investment for generational projects. As such, it will continue to be a challenge to prevent compromising the city's AAA standing while minimizing the burden of future city projects. And so, you know, we have aquariums, schools, parks and rec, Rudy Loop, potentially Atlantic Park, are these considered those generational projects?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Vice, yes, yes, and if there's others that council want to identify. I would also say that some of those projects are already one way, shape, or form, some of them, not all of them, in different iterations in the CIP, in the six-year plan, and that came into this calculus and this equation here. So that 250 roughly is things that may not possibly be a part of your current adopted plan CIP.
And the reason I asked is because one of those projects, when, you know, at the beginning, we were at 80 million, now we're at roughly 140 million, so that's 60 additional million dollars. And you said, you know, we'll come to you, we'll let you know, we're going to have our number straight, that's an instance where we're 60 million off.
Again, I think what the city manager indicated is if we can get from you the priorities and the relative timing of those priorities, then we'll work with staff to sort of update cash flows, compare them to the key revenue sources you have built in the cushion, that's something we like to do, and I know we're speaking, your staff's the same way, want to build that cushion in. But again, we do generally feel good about where the city is, though. You start, as Kyle said, we said, you start from a position of strength. I mean, the one, your debt service to expenditure, that credit card, if you would, they say anything from 8% or below is a AAA, and we're right there, right around 6%. So we're really starting from a good position, not necessarily others are that way, and in fact, I'm going by memory, but Kyle said that if you look at the national Triple A's, the Triple A's, again, the highest you can be, that was about 12.3%. So we're half of national places like Charlotte and Nashville, places we represent, so you really are starting from a better position. We want to make sure we keep it as close to that as possible, though.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just say briefly, you know, we thought it was really important to bring in Davenport at this point, because first of all, we're going to have a discussion point at the retreat, and then we're going to have to make a decision point, you know, with the budget, and then, you know, eventually a vote if it comes to that. And we thought it would be very important to get a significant background, to give a sense of assurance that we're still maintaining extremely disciplined and good fiscal management, you know, that we're not going to, but once again, we're confronted with a reality. Stormwater and sea level rise is going to be a project in perpetuity, it's going to go well beyond the bond initiative that we got, and that's something we have to wave into the future. And we just finished our first 60 years, and we're looking at a couple of new schools, but don't forget, they have, what, 85 school buildings in the city, and many of them are over 50 years old. And we all remember how, you know, Building One, which was built, what, 52, 54 years ago, deteriorated to the point that we're sitting in this magnificent structure right now. So the point is, though, is we, you know, this was the idea to give the proper background that could really lead to a robust conversation coming up in the retreat on how we want to handle the future challenges, and would be given an assurance that this is going to be done in a very proper way. We're very good at paying our debt, you know, back, you know, to the point where we do have a triple bond rating. But by the same token, you know, if we're getting a recommendation from Davenport, you know, that if we can improve our capacity, and but the latitude to go forward with some of these projects as they come up, you know, one thing about council, you know, priorities have a habit of changing sometimes. But listen, thank you all very much, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, now the fire department flex and sick leave. Okay, and we have our newly minted chief Kenny Pravits here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think some of you all may recall, I think we sent a briefing memo and a package as well. In October of last year, we sent the detailed memo about how this possibly works. And then as part of that, Councilmember Henley reached out and asked that we do an in-person briefing, because it's just a very complicated process to talk out in writing. So she, we thought it'd be helpful to have a dialogue with the council. Should council want to make any changes? Understanding how every time council steps into and the city staff step into pay benefits and impacts on possible compression and things like that. If this is something that council wants us to move towards looking into, I would ask that council would just give us direction to evaluate and bring some options forward versus trying to solve it right now, because we want to just get a sense of the various impacts it would possibly have amongst the workforce and public safety and align with your policies on parity, things like that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Patrick.
Good afternoon.
Chief Pravits, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for asking for this presentation. I think Lori's going to work on pulling up the PowerPoint, but just here to talk to you a little bit about our flex and sick leave issue. It's been a concern of the workforce for quite some time, and we appreciate you asking about it and letting us present the information, so.
Technology impairment.
Yes. Great, yeah, yeah, everything's going well, thank you.
I want my people back.
Thank you, man. Yep, thank you.
Here we go.
All right. So I'll speak to the, the concerns, the first couple of slides and our work, how our work schedule works, and then Monica will present about how we got to our current calculations and how we got to the, the place that we're in now. And then we'll follow back up. I'll finish off with what we anticipate the changes would be or the costs would, would impact us. So, next slide, please. Oh, I probably have it here, don't I? All right. So the current sick leave benefit in Virginia Beach is less than our peers. The accrual for sick leave is not adequate for our workforce. So imagine an employee getting ready to come to work, making breakfast, cuts their hand right at the beginning of their work cycle, and they go get three stitches. In the fire department, you're not allowed to come to work with stitches because of bloodborne pathogen infections. So potentially that employee will burn 96 hours of leave in the 10, the 10 days that they have to be off while they have those stitches and they're healing. So in our, with our work schedule, the, the amount of leave that we accrue just doesn't equal the amount that we burn. And there's an imbalance between the accruals and the, the rate we burn. We use a ratio for how we calculate the accruals, but we burn it at the full allocated space. So when looking at the flexible holiday benefit, it's just the same or similar problem. All employees earn the benefit of a holiday. The employees that work eight, 10, or 12 hours all get their full work period off. The firefighters earn 11.2 hours as part, as a representative of their work period. So in order to get the day off, they'll have to either combine a flexible holiday with annual leave or two flexible holidays with annual leave to get the full shift off. So. Operational firefighters work an average of 16 hours more per week. They're different from all of the city employees. They work 168 hours in a 21-day cycle or 2,912 hours in the, in the year compared to other city employees that work 2,080. So it's approximately 900 hours more a year that our firefighters are scheduled. The difference in schedule works to the city's advantage in many ways. Fair Labor Standard Act allows firefighters to work more hours before be eligible for overtime, so we work 53 hours before we can earn overtime. When calculating the hourly rate, we use the hours worked per year to figure the hourly rate for firefighters. So we have pay parity on annual salary, but when you compare a firefighter's hourly rate to a police officer's hourly rate, there's a significant difference. Starting police officer would make a 24-hour hourly rate plus an hour, an overtime rate of 36 hours. A firefighter with the same annual salary has an hourly rate of $17 an hour and an overtime rate of $25 an hour. So the, so the difference in the work schedule is a benefit of the city on some cases and it's a detriment to the firefighters in some cases. And we use these differences to come up with the ratios. This transitions, the way we calculate the hours transitions to how we figure out holidays, overtime, and the flexible holidays. So that's how, that's how it impacts our workers, and they all have been asking about, could we fix this or look at this for many years? So Monica's going to come up and talk to about how we've got to where we are, and then we'll come back and do some comparisons to other cities, and then I'll finish up with what the impacts would be to us.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, Council. We wanted to go over briefly the.
Does everybody know Monica Copeland? So Monica is the head of staffing and compensation. She's one of the co-acting directors for HR while we go through the HR recruitment process. The other acting director, Stacy Popovich, who's over employee relations.
So good afternoon. As Chief Pravits mentioned, we're going to go over the origin of the leave ratio to kind of give you some perspective on how we got to where we are today. And if you'll bear with me, I'm going to build you a clock for a second so that we can kind of show you what that ratio is. At its heart, though, city employees are into two different categories. They're either a 40-hour a week employee or a 56-hour a week employee. So sworn firefighters are their own kind of, they have their own hourly rate, and they do have their own work week at 56 hours a week. But it's, it's a pretty basic formula on how you get to those hours. So 40-hour a week employees, they work 2,080 hours over the course of a year. So if you take an employee's hourly rate and you multiply it by 28, or 2,080, you get their full annual salary. Many years ago, there was a work group or a policy group that was created to kind of look at the differences between the 56-hour a week employee and the 40-hour a week employee and say, how do we make sure that we equalize their leave? So what they did is they took the 2,080 hours for a 40-hour a week employee, and they said there's 52 weeks in the year, that equals your 40, 40 hours per week. You take that same number of hours and you divide it by 12 months in a year, and that averages 173 hours per month. And if you do the same for an operational sworn firefighter, which is the 2,912 hours, working hours in their year, you divide it by 52 weeks, that's where you get the 56 hours a week. And you take that same number of hours annually and you divide it by 12 months in a year, and you'll get 243 average hours per month of average of work. So there, the work group, they wanted to look at these two different sets, and they wanted to say, okay, how do we make sure that we equalize their leave? And again, this was many years ago, but it was a basic formula. You just take the standard workday for most employees, although there are differing schedules as, as Chief Pravits mentioned. And you say eight hours of sick leave divided by 173 hours of work per month means that every leave day is .046 value for that employee. And if you do the same for the firefighter, you just already multiply the .046 by the 243 hours of average work per month, you get the same. So that's how you get to the 11.2 hours is by multiplying that .046 by the 243. So that was, that was the case for many years. Since 2014, I will let you know that we do have a new category of employee that doesn't get annual and sick leave. They earn PTO. We call those, you may have heard of the VRS hybrid employee. So theirs is a little bit different. That's just one of the changes that we wanted to make you aware of that has happened in the preceding years or the succeeding years, rather. So we did want to also give you an opportunity to see kind of what some of the other fire departments are doing in the market and what their hours of sick leave are as compared to the city of Virginia Beach. So you can see there that there are some differentiations in how much sick leave is earned per month in some of the other market cities. Now, when the policy group met again many years ago, that was what was representative in the market, but there are some differences now. So you can see what those are. There are a couple of entities that are providing PTO, which is that shared annual and sick leave, but that's a lot less common for sworn fire and police. And then we move to flexible holidays, which isn't quite as easy as a comparison as sick leave. Sick leave is sick leave, but different cities handle flexible holidays or they handle holidays differently. So you have some cities that observe the same thing as the state, which is 14.5 holidays, and they, they observe the exact same days the state observes. And then you have municipalities that have their own thing going on, and, and we are one of them. We have 11 holidays and we provide three flexible holidays. We used to provide two flexible holidays, but we added another flexible holiday, I don't know, maybe three years ago when we got rid of the birthday leave. We got a lot of feedback from PTO employees that they didn't have enough leave, and this is one way that we increased their, their leave. So we also wanted to give you kind of a market comparison of all leave, and we thought that was important because Chesapeake does something unique in that firefighters, they, Chesapeake observes the state holidays, but their firefighters, they add in their holiday leave to their annual leave accrual. So their monthly annual leave accrual is augmented by their holidays versus having separate holidays for them. And it's interesting, too, because different cities, they provide different values for their holidays. Some of them provide eight hours for their holiday leave, some of them provide 10.4. And as Chief Pravits said, it's same with the sick leave, they handle it differently, too, as far as how they take sick leave. Some municipalities require their firefighters to take it on an hour-for-hour basis. Some of them require that they only take 16 hours to take off the whole shift. So there's quite a big differentiation in how municipalities handle holidays and to some extent, sick leave as well. Any questions before Chief Pravits goes back to the sick leave considerations?
Like I said, this is just a high-level overview. The sick leave consideration, sick leave in our department is very low compared to peers. We average five people off a shift on sick leave. We don't anticipate that if we issue people more leave, they will use more. As I mentioned earlier, people tend to bank their leave because if you get an injury or you're out, family medical or something, you burn a lot of leave when you have to burn it. So people tend to save it. Most employees keep healthy sick leave balances in case they're injured. Firefighters cannot report to work if they're sick or injured. Can't come to work with a sprained ankle. Like I mentioned, you can't come to work with stitches. You just can't show up to work if you're not 100%. So you tend to burn a lot of leave. As part of any change, we would, we would hope that you would consider, excuse me, incentivizing the savings of leave. So a lot of localities are, are authorized by VRS to allow employees to sell their sick leave back at retirement. That would, something that would help keep people to, to retain it. We pay $28 a day for a retiree when they're leaving to buy out their leave, which it bounced to about $3 an hour. So there, we do see some senior employees at the end of their career start to burn down their sick leave, and that impacts operations, obviously. So if they could either sell it back through, through VRS or if at higher, a higher value it's, it turned in, then you might see people retain it and not have those issues at the end of their career. Going to flexible holidays now. The flexible holidays, same thing. We don't see that we have any significant financial impacts if we change a flexible holiday. These count against our leave balances. We authorize 16 people off a day plus three chief officers. Just because we changed the flexible holidays doesn't give us the ability to change how many people are actually off. So it won't impact us staffing-wise, and we don't think it'll impact us financially. The flexible holidays are used against account for all leave spots, like I mentioned. So we, we don't have the ability to increase the leave spots right now. We don't have the staffing to do that. So changing this is, is just going to provide a cleaner way for them to get the work period off, and we don't see have the sick leave or the flexible holidays having financial impacts to the department. If you do redefine a holiday, we do pay straight time for employees that are off, that are not scheduled for a holiday. So if you do redefine a holiday as part of any review, there could be financial implications for that piece of it. But that is a kind of a separate entity. If you decide to do that, that could be financially impacted. It's $60,000 a year if we go to 16 hours and a little bit higher if we go to 24 hours. But you don't, that's a separate part of this. You don't have to change the, how we pay that at the same time as changing the amount they earn. So that's, that's all we have. If you had questions or if you had anything that you would like us to add, we're here for you.
Any questions, Patrick?
Yeah, this is the mayor before. As, this is informational, but if council wants us to, to change this any way, shape or form, I simply would ask that you just let us know, because again, it, it triggers a myriad of different ripple effects amongst the organization. So if you want to stay enhanced, just let us know. We will come back and give you options, you know, no cost, low cost, high cost, just a council review and consider.
Okay, Michael, and then Barbara, and then Rosemary.
Chief, congratulations again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's good to see you. Thank you for being here. And thank you, Mr. DeHaney, for giving us the, the benefit of sharing this information with us. You know, I think it's really important that as council members and as a community, we rely upon the expert advice that were provided by folks like you. And I've heard from firefighters who have expressed, you know, concern about where we stand. I think that regional chart showed that we're behind in terms of providing these types of benefits for the men and women who serve our community. In Virginia Beach, we take our pride usually in being on the leading edge, on the front end. And so I just want to make sure that I understand correctly, you've developed this in coordination and collaboration with the professional firefighters, the men and women who serve, and you're bringing it to us sort of as a united, united front, so to speak. And is that correct?
Yes, the concern came from the troops, obviously important to them. It's important to me. And so Labor brought it up and brought it to the councils, and then that's how we got here today. So it is, it is one of those things.
That's a great way.
Yes.
That's, that's how things are supposed to work.
Yeah.
And I thank you for that. And I just wanted to bring that, make sure that point was well made.
Barbara, and then Rosemary.
Well, Michael's just touched on that, that, you know, I think the important thing is, you know, we've always felt that we, we are supposed to be at the top regionally. And when we're competing with our regional cities for the best, we want to be in that competition. And if we have slipped, I mean, I don't, I don't understand all of this well enough to be able to tell you what I can, what to change. But I, I would just like to say, I want to make sure that we are competitive and that we are not falling behind what we need to be to be competitive. I mean, we have historically said we wanted to be at, at the top in our region. And if we've slipped, however you do it, I, I certainly can't tell you what is better. I think that's for you all to decide.
Rosemary.
I agree with Barbara. I definitely still don't understand it. It's my second time seeing it. But if you could please come back with some options and recommendations, I think it's really important not only to be competitive, but also for morale. I think, you know, morale is just as, sometimes just as important as, as the money. I mean, we, my mother used to always say she liked to be around happy people, and we want to make sure our employees are, are happy and want to be around as well. So if you could please come up with some options and maybe, maybe we'll understand the options a little bit better than this. We really appreciate you bringing it to our attention, because these are the kind of things we have no idea of knowing unless y'all let us know.
Okay, Rocky and Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and Monica and, and City Manager. This question may be for you, but reference to the flex holidays. If I'm a 12-hour shift employee and I get a flex day, does it cover all 12 hours of that flex day?
Yes.
Okay. And so I guess a 10-hour employee would be the same?
Yes.
So we're, I guess when we're talking about the flex days, we're talking about mostly public safety, or are there some other folks in the city that do the 10-hour shifts?
Um, yes, public, a lot of operational folks use.
So as I look at this, the low-hanging fruit seems to be, if it's, if, if other people get the full day, flex day equals a full day off, what would be the financial impact on making it a full day for a firefighter?
And that's what we need time to evaluate, right, to look into, you know? So that's the simplest way to address it, but we just need to figure out what the financial cost is. But also, too, we all know, and councils done this plenty of times, one benefit for one section of the workforce leads to real or perceived morale and implications with the rest of the workforce. So that's kind of why I said if council wants us to look into this, you allow us to go back and balance what that may possibly mean. It may possibly mean that we come back with options, but also something else that would be beneficial from the rest of the workforce if they feel like there's a plus of going one way that they're not seeing a material impact as well.
Josh.
Chief, thank you, Monica, thank you. Nice to meet you. And I concur with every.
And I concur with everything that has been said so far, but what strikes me the most is just the element of fairness and, you know, reading the executive summary and some of what was on the PowerPoint, the fact that you have to combine two flexible holidays and then on top of that add two hours of annual leave to take a full shift off work just doesn't, doesn't strike me as being fair. So I would concur with my colleagues and hope that we can revisit it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I just had a question where you mentioned about the hours and burning those hours off, and if people who are about to retire end up coming out, how badly does it impact the rest of the group? If they decided, I have 10 more hours, so I'm just going to stay home, I'm going to burn that off. That means you have to bring somebody else in and so forth. What's the impact of something like that?
So our staffing is built around averages, and so we average five people off on sick leave, so we set our leave balances, the amount of people that can be off, knowing that average. So if we, obviously, if we have a bunch of people take annual leave, it impacts staffing, and we do have to do mandatory holdovers, but we've built our staffing model on our averages. And so as long as nothing spikes, we can handle it within our staffing. If there was significant changes, then we'd have to come back and probably look at our staffing models for the fire department, either adjust the amount of leave that people can have off or put more people in the mandatory holdover status.
And they're comfortable with that?
Yeah, these two changes, we don't think are going to have any significant impact to our staffing.
Because that's our important part.
Yeah, it's, the big part is if we can incentivize the savings by doing the VRS credit for the payout, then people would likely hold on to it more.
Hey, Barbara?
Well, I guess the difference in the fire department, and I'm not sure how it relates to all the other public safeties, but in our regular folks is every position has got to be staffed. You can't have an unstaffed position. And so if somebody is going to be out, or you have a lot of people, you've got to have a lot of people back in the work whether they really want it to be or not. And I think that's the thing that makes the fire department unique. You just can't have, and I think you're mentioning that you've got to be 100%, too, if you're on the job.
Right.
Makes it a lot more difficult to make sure we're staffed fully everywhere. But I think also that points out why we have to be able to hire people and to keep people because we've got to be fully staffed. And now that we're getting ready to open Burton Station, you've got to have additional people. And so we can't be at a position of being short-staffed because somebody else has got to make it up if you're not, if somebody's not there.
Yes.
And I think it's such a unique situation, but every, every department is unique. I mean, everybody's got different needs and so forth, and so we, we can't all be the same because everybody's got different needs. And I think, you know, our employees understand that as well. I mean, you have people in other departments that there's got to be somebody there if the sewer line breaks, they don't have a choice. So every, every department cannot be the same because everybody operates differently. And I think that's the important thing, and it's hard for us to understand, too, because, you know, it's, but you all are in that position to know what's fair for everybody. And I think that's, that's a really tough one, but we really do need to make sure we are able to keep our staff around, make sure we're not having them train and then leave to go to someplace else. We don't want that to happen either, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, because after talking with you all a lot, I mean, you are an all-hazard team. And that's different in that it's not only fire. I remember when my mother was ill and we needed, here comes fire as well. And she used to say, why are they coming, they're going to alert the whole neighborhood? But the point is, you are there for all of these, so we need to show we value you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And Ken, we appreciate you coming. And if I could just make a quick point, it was about this time last year that we went into serious discussions about implementing a step program. And that was requested by the public safety. And, but once again, you know, as Patrick, the city manager, really pointed out, there's got to be fairness and equity. And hopefully that, you know, I think that should be an important part of the solution. But once again, you know, fire does have an element of uniqueness in terms of the shifts, the way they're done. And it's not as though somebody could be, really be put on light duty, you know, in case of, you know, things. But, but once again, you know, it's a complicated situation, but, you know, as we're going to find out, that, you know, budgeting, the art of budgeting is based on priorities. And the thing is, as long as, you know, we have a well-defined case of, you know, almost like a SWOT analysis of, you know, the implications of it and everything, you know, we can hopefully come to a prudent decision. Win-win, okay?
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, cities elections on the public process.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you, the council passed in December a resolution directing staff to prepare and implement a public input system on the election system. Included within that resolution was a requirement that that process begin during the month of January. I am aware that you have an item on your agenda today which would reverse that direction it passed, but since this is the last meeting in January, we, we have to come forward and propose something to you in order to be consistent with what the council has previously told us to do. So today we have a two-pronged presentation, starting with Chris Moynihan in my office, who has addressed the public and the council many times on this issue as it's been going on now for almost six years. And after that, Tiffany Russell from the manager staff is also here to talk to you about if we are to continue with the public input process, how we would propose that to play out. I want to thank the manager and Tiffany for being of great assistance to Chris and I in working through these issues, and we will look forward to whatever direction the council will provide.
Okay, thank you. First, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Many of you have heard a portion, at least, of this briefing in the past. However, I'm mindful that this is the first, the new council has heard of a lot of these issues, and I'm also briefing the public audience today. So there will be a little bit more detail perhaps than, than we would perhaps have if it had been the prior council. So with that said, it's very important to know kind of where we came from and how we got here to understand where we are right now. And so I intend to go through what our system looked like through 2020, and then talk, obviously, about the Holloway case that has been going on since 2017. As Mark said, there was some 2021 General Assembly action that also directly impacts our system going forward. And then certainly, you all know what happened with the 2022 election, but where does that leave us going into 2024 and beyond? That's the legal piece of the briefing, and then I'll hand over the reins to the very capable Tiffany Russell to go through the community engagement plan, just so you can understand what's envisioned if you decide to go down that path. Our system is governed by City Charter 3.01, was passed by the General Assembly. It, of course, has 11 members. Under the charter, four of the members, including the mayor, are to be elected at large, and they can reside anywhere in the city. Under the charter, the seven members who are elected from residence districts can have to live within the residence district, but they can be elected by all of the members at large, or all the citizens at large from the city. That has existed in similar form since 1996 through, of course, 2000's election. There were two referenda in 1990 with different wording that came out with different outcomes as to whether to go to a ward system. The district boundaries are required by our constitution in Virginia to be adjusted after each decennial census, which of course happened in 2020. And then just for reference, it's important to know that our school board is elected under the same method under the city charter as the city council, with the one exception that they do not have a chair elected by the public. They have a fourth-at-large member, and they select their own chair at their organizational meeting every year. So with that said, the Holloway case came up in its initial iteration in 2017. It was filed pro se by Ms. Latasha Holloway. It went forward with an idea of a single minority-majority district, and then it was changed in 20, I'm sorry, yeah, in 2018, when Georgia Allen joined as a plaintiff and the Campaign Legal Center in DC got involved. That case ultimately matured to trial, for a bench trial in October of 2020. Importantly, though, before we got the trial court's liability and injunction order in March of 2021, there was a general assembly session in Richmond, and two major events occurred as it relates to our election system, which I'll go into in a little detail on. The first is House Bill 2198, and the second is what's understood to be the Virginia Voting Rights Act. So, again, the case was originally brought with the idea of trying to draw a compact, single-minority-majority district, a black-majority district. The map, basically, our population is dispersed throughout the city in a way that it wasn't possible to draw a compact district of only one minority. However, once the case changed in 2018, there was a new theory asserted, and that was that the city's system violated Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act as it related to a combined Hispanic, Black, and Asian minority group, which is called a coalition claim. And there were a number of legalities associated with that that we got into as we got deeper into the case. There was a bench trial that occurred for six days in the height of COVID in October 2020. The city disputed the factual legal assertions, particularly this idea that these different groups, Black, Hispanic, and Asian voters of Virginia Beach, think and vote alike for the same candidates. We believe there was some diversity among the political preferences of our various minority communities, and that was our primary point of contention in disputing the case. And then we also asserted the legal position that the Fourth Circuit and several other circuits have not ruled on whether a coalition claim is viable under the Voting Rights Act. In certain other circuits in the United States, it is viable. Under the Sixth Circuit, it's not viable, and neither our circuit, the Fourth, nor the Supreme Court of the United States has ever passed on that issue. So it was kind of a novel claim on top of everything else. So again, we did not receive a ruling after trial was concluded in October of 2020. We then had the January General Assembly session. Two bills of note passed in that session. The first one was proposed by Delegate Kelly Converse Fowler. It was adopted by the 2021 General Assembly, signed by Governor Northam, and you can see the text there, I won't read it to you, but essentially it says, for any district, or for any local election system in the state that has residence districts, which Virginia Beach does by virtue of its charter, those residence districts by operation of general law are now ward districts. So a law was passed, became the governing law of the state, that our seven residence districts are ward districts, no matter what happens with the Holloway case. And so that is important when you hear about the ultimate outcome of the Holloway case. And of course, that bill's equally applicable to school boards. The other important enactment for purposes of our conversation today is the Virginia Voting Rights Act. And importantly, there are a couple of things that we need to focus on. First of all, there's a new preclearance process with the Virginia Attorney General is required to approve any type of significant electoral changes, whether it be system changes, district boundary changes, precinct changes. That all has to go to the Virginia Attorney General now for sign-off. Second of all, and this is important, too, your three districts, I'm sorry, your three-at-large seats under the charter system, those at-large seats are subject to challenge by a private citizen under the State Voting Rights Act. So that obviously impacts where you can go from here as we look forward. So even without the Holloway case, your residence districts under your charter had already become ward districts. That means that the citizens were no longer in a position under state law to elect all 11 council members. You can only vote on your single representative for the ward and then the three-at-large seats that are still in the charter. Now, those three-at-large seats are subject to a future state court challenge based upon whether those at-large seats would allow for minority voices to lose a level of influence in the outcome of elections, which is a lower legal burden for a plaintiff than the Federal Voting Rights Act under the Jingles test. I'm getting kind of deep in the weeds here, but it's important to know that an at-large system in Virginia, including in Virginia Beach, is subject to a future challenge under state law. So Holloway decision came out, it was a two-part case. The first part was the liability opinion, which came out in March of 2021, found that the city's system violated Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act and enjoined elections under that system that the city had used until 2020. There was a process whereby the city and the plaintiffs presented various maps to the court to draw a new system, and ultimately, the court appointed a special master, Dr. Bernard Groffman, who you may have heard about. He also was one of the two special masters who drew the Virginia legislative districts for the next 10 years. He came forward and said, he believed that a 10-1 ward district system, using 2020 census data, which updates us for a decennial redistricting perspective, would allow the creation of three minority-opportunity districts. The court agreed with the special master, imposed those districts in that system in December of 2021, and immediately, the city began working toward implementing that system because we were under a federal court order and we had an election coming up, obviously, very soon, with, within the applications, the petitions and signatures for candidates, obviously due, as many of you know, in June of last year. So we were then in, all in on implementing the 10-1 system, but at the same time, the prior council directed us to appeal the district court, the federal district court's ruling, which we did. That obviously has its own timeline and process. We learned in late July of 2022 that the Court of Appeals had vacated the district court's rulings on both liability and the system that was ordered, based upon essentially the fact that the bill, House Bill 2198, that was passed in the middle of our litigation case, basically said that the system that the plaintiff sued under no longer exists because you no longer have seven residence districts, you now have seven ward districts by operation of state law. So the court ruled that the case was mooted, reversed or vacated the district court's rulings, but it remanded the case to the trial court and invited the plaintiffs to assert amended claims against the city going forward based upon what system is adopted beyond 2022. So we are, yes, sir?
So does vacated mean it's done, still allowed on life support?
Well, it means the original rulings no longer have any legal effect, but the case is not gone because the plaintiffs can file amended claims based upon what, what, what system that is adopted by the city council in conjunction with the General Assembly. And if they have complaints based upon that, they would be allowed to proceed under the same case number, and that relates possibly to the plaintiff's assertion of an attorney's fees claim. They had represented to us but not provided receipts, that they had $3 or $4 million in attorney's fees accrued. That attorney's fees has gone away as we sit here today, but if, if that litigation fires up again, then it's possible they would seek to assert the prior attorney's fees in regard to the renewed claim. But where we stand in the case is that the case is stayed until March while the city council decides what direction it wants to proceed. So that's where we are in the litigation. You'll recall that the 2022 election was held using the 10-1 system with the three minority-opportunity districts. That was based in large part on the Purcell Doctrine, which says, if you're close to an election, don't mess with the system that's in place, essentially. So we advised council and council and the state proceeded on the election in 2022 using the 10-1 ward system. But where we sit today is that we don't have an adopted system going forward. So- So your city council and school board elections for 2024 and beyond have not been determined. You have a city charter that requires, at the least, a redistricting ordinance to be adopted, but you also know that if you continue under the city charter system with the three at-large seats, you are likely to have a renewed challenge in federal court and also to draw a challenge in state court by other plaintiffs or maybe the same plaintiffs. So you're kind of, at least as you sit with status quo, your charter doesn't provide you a complete answer as we sit here today. Similarly, if you wanted to proceed under the 10-1 system, you have to take some action to adopt that, whether it be a decennial redistricting ordinance that just simply accepts what the court previously ordered as the city's plan for the next 10 years or if it wanted to go to the General Assembly for purposes of a charter change to conform the city's charter to a 10-1 system. There has to be some type of legislative act, perhaps both locally and at the General Assembly, to adopt any system, including the 10-1. Yes, sir?
Mr. Boynton, status quo, do the three at-large districts have to be minority majority or is it any three districts?
So what we have at this point is we have not done a redistricting for this decennial period of time from 2022 going forward to 2030. So your charter says the system is a seven district, three at-large system. So your seven districts haven't been redistricted, so we don't know what they would look like. You have three at-large, which by at-large means they're citywide, and that is, you know, simpler to draw because it's citywide, but you have all the potential challenges that still exist with at-large seats where we know or we suspect strongly the plaintiffs would come back in the Holloway case and say, well, we don't like at-large seats. That defeats the purpose of minority opportunity districts. And then you certainly have the potential for a state law claim because that large districts are just favored under state law in circumstances where there's some evidence of racially polarized voter.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
Well, I just want to ask, right now, what we have, what we voted in under was the 10-1, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But you're saying it has not been adopted, am I right?
Going forward.
Going forward. So where we are right now is like a middle ground until something is adopted. And if it happens, you still have opportunity for the plaintiffs to come back and say, we don't like this program and what. And what you're trying to do is find out, not just from us, but from the entire city, if that's why you want to do the survey.
I believe that, again, I don't want to speak for the council, the former council's intent in adopting that ordinance, but the thought was there is not a decision made going forward. And so no matter where we go, there has to be a decision. So if there's going to be a decision, let's have public input. I don't want to mischaracterize it, but I think that's maybe the thought process.
Okay. Anybody else at this point?
So I'll try to push through this. There are a number of barriers to other systems, and you'll recall, you know, part of the debate in the past, in the last council, was there's a fear of suggesting to the public that it can adopt a system that is likely to be challenged in federal or state court under unfavorable legal circumstances. And so really, the ability of this council to choose its future system is, we would say, from a legal perspective, pretty tightly circumscribed. Certainly, we know that the 10-1 system is satisfactory to the federal court and to the plaintiffs, and you would not have at-large districts in that environment and that if you adopted that system. And so you would not have that state court, private citizen challenge threat. You also know that that system has been precleared by the Virginia Attorney General's office because it was for the last election. So that is, from a legal perspective, the simplest path, but you still would need to take action as it relates to adopting a decennial redistricting ordinance and getting with the General Assembly to pursue either a charter change or a general law change to conform state law to the system adopted under the decennial redistricting. The other two possible paths are, and again, I got into the barriers and started talking systems instead, so I apologize for kind of going down a slightly different path. But, um, yeah. So long story short, there's also, on top of all the other challenges we have, is a state law that suggests that if you adopt a decennial redistricting measure, that that local ordinance takes precedence legally over your city charter. Now, there are other provisions that suggest that that is an interesting take on the world. And I think the General Assembly would probably say that, you know, you might be able to adopt a system to change it temporarily, but you ultimately need to go to the General Assembly to get whatever system you use approved by the state entity that is, in a Dillon's Rule state, so important. Politically, if you needed a charter change for any system you were looking at, you would need a 2/3 supermajority vote of both chambers of the General Assembly. If you are seeking a general law change, for example, House Bill 2198 was a general law change, and that only required a simple majority from both chambers, the General Assembly plus the governor's signature. So there are a lot of barriers on the state law side to whatever system you adopt, in addition to that the federal court still being out there and watchful of whatever system the city pursues. So big picture, you have to adopt the decennial redistricting measure for any system that is not all at-large. You must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which means practically that the plaintiffs in the litigation have a voice and they can bring the federal court back into play if they are dissatisfied with the path the city takes. You must comply with the Virginia Voting Rights Act, which means preclearance of whatever system you adopt. And also, your at-large districts are, if you have at-large districts, will be subject to a private citizen challenge, even if the Virginia Attorney General were to preclear it. That doesn't prevent an individual private citizen from challenging it under the Virginia Voting Rights Act. And of course, the legal effect of House Bill, and it's 2198, sorry for the typo, is that the seven residence districts are ward districts going forward. Of course, the upshot is, whatever you do, ultimately, we feel like you're probably going to have to go to the General Assembly and get at least a simple majority vote of both chambers and perhaps a charter change, which is a supermajority. Election system options, and this is where I jumped to about three slides ago. The first option, the legally least complicated option, is retaining the 10-1 ward system with the three minority opportunity districts. It is possible, as a wrinkle to that, that you could adjust some of your precincts, some of your district lines that don't negatively impact the three minority opportunity districts, and the court would not have a problem with that. So, you know, 10-1A is the ability to tweak a little bit, but still have your 10-1 ward system with the three minority opportunity districts. The next system that we think is a potential path to legal viability is to attempt to draw a 7-3-1 ward, super ward system, similar to Norfolk. The members on the last council will recall that we went down this path with the plaintiffs when we were trying to work out a resolution, and they were at least open to the conversation about having seven ward districts and three super ward districts where you were able to draw three total districts that were minority opportunity districts. The concept was two of the seven would be minority opportunity districts and one of the three would be a minority opportunity district. So, and again, we've not attempted to draw those districts. I can't tell you what the plaintiff's reaction would be to this or the court's reaction, but that is a path that is at least, we think, viable for further discussion. And then the final path is, to the extent you wish to have any at-large seats, there is, I think, a possibility that it could be made viable in terms of federal law, state law, the plaintiffs, the judge in federal court, by using ranked choice voting. Now, that is a complicated system. It is fraught with a lot of public confusion, various localities and states, and as far as from Alaska to Maine, have started down that path. The purpose behind ranked choice voting, which is also called instant runoff voting, is to allow minority voices to have the ability to kind of combine their voice and elevate someone who may not be the initial plurality winner, but ultimately can become the compromise majority winner under that system. You'll also recall the Virginia Republican Party did its convention for governor, lieutenant governor, and Attorney General using ranked choice voting, but that was a convention-type setting, not a public, you know, primary. So all that being said, I know there are concerns in the public about what systems you can go to. We think that this is a challenging area to be trying to work through. We wanted to preview the challenges, and the purpose in doing that is to help Tiffany explain to you why we would go down certain paths with public input if that's what the council decides tonight versus other paths. For example, just, you know, trying to go to a system with a bunch of at-large seats without any ranked choice voting combining to make it more viable from a Voting Rights Act perspective.
Rose, ma'am.
Are we allowed to say anything about the settlement?
I mean, it was public, I believe. The council actually had a public vote on the settlement that was rejected. Is that the settlement you're referring to?
Not ranked choice.
That, okay, that was an earlier one that is also public. When we first got into this case, we were before trial, there was an ability to work the case out at that point in time by retaining the 7-3-1 system with the three at-large seats being subject to ranked choice voting. That was something that was discussed, and city council was not able to, at that point, support it. And that was before the case was tried. That was before the General Assembly changed the law on the seven districts as to, you know, the ability to have residence districts. So, but that was something that the plaintiffs were open to at one point.
... settlement, and we didn't take it. So could you explain ranked choice voting? Because I think it's very confusing.
It is very confusing. I'm far from an expert.
This is for the public to hear?
Sure.
So let's say we had seven wards and three at-large. I guess, would the ward system be ranked choice or just the three at-large?
I believe what, again, we're talking, we're carving from whole cloth at this point, but the ranked choice voting is particularly important to legitimize the at-large seats. And so it would be complicated for us because you'd have two at-large on a two-year cycle and you'd have one at-large on a two-year cycle. And, you know, when you have two at-large, it gets very complicated to illustrate. But you're basically trying to get to a point where people, they don't just vote for the person they want to win. They vote, if there are seven candidates, they vote 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and they keep tabulating the votes, dropping off the people at the bottom and reallocating their votes till a winner gets above 50%. So you could not win with 30% of the vote under that system. You'd have to ultimately, under five, 10, 15 tabulations, get to a point where the other candidates dropped off, their voters' votes got reallocated to their second, third, fourth choices, and at some point, it bubbles up to one person being above 50%. But it is complicated. I'm sure I've done a terrible job explaining it and...
So does it have to be 50% or could it be like Chesapeake does, a top-two vote getter?
I don't believe that's how it works.
To give you a simple illustration of it, let's say you have three candidates for one spot. Candidate A gets 35%, candidate B gets 35%, and candidate C gets the remaining. In the ranked choice voting, you get rid, for a single seat, I, like Chris, am not going to even try to sit here and tell you how it happens when you've got two on the ballot at the same time. But when you have just a single seat, the 30% votes cast for the third candidate, that third candidate is eliminated, and you go back and look at that 30% of the votes and see who those 30% picked as number two. And if those votes are then cast for that number two, and if those combined with the votes for number one equal 50% plus one vote, then that person's elected.
It seems to me that, with the plaintiffs suggesting that as a settlement, that they weren't totally against it because at that point in time, we could have settled the case and gone that way.
Yeah, I mean, we have not explored that with them recently. Certainly, we'd want direction from council before we did that, but it is absolutely accurate and fair.
That would be an option as well.
They were open to it at one point in time, and that's why it's listed here as being within that range of possibly viable options.
Yep. Smerina?
So I'm going to go back to the 10-1 system. How did that system become our established system we have now?
It was ordered by a court, and the state and the city implemented it based upon a court order. While the court order was ultimately vacated, there was no opportunity to change it before the election.
And so currently, the 10-1 system has been approved by the Attorney General?
Yes.
And it can be a system that we keep in place if we adopt it, correct?
Yes.
We adopt it as a body. Do we have to do anything else?
I believe you'd need to go to Richmond, to the General Assembly, and have them conform the charter or pass a general law to basically support the system you adopted under your decennial redistricting ordinance.
Okay. So if the citizens have said and say, listen, we want a 10-1 system, it yielded the most diverse counsel we've seen in 60 years, we think we want to keep that for now. We're in a good place to move forward based on those two guidelines that you've given us. To have one as a body, adopt it, and then go to Richmond and advocate, this is the system that we want.
Yes, ma'am. I'm speaking to the legalities, but those will be the steps.
Any other system that is, I guess, suggested, if I'm hearing you correct, could be challenged in court?
That's fair.
Okay. In terms of asking the citizens for citizen input, if my recollect serves me, we did this before, back last year, before a potential system was actually decided by the court. We asked for...
There was a process in the context of trying to reach a settlement with the plaintiffs where there was some public input that happened during that process. Ultimately, the settlement kind of fizzled, but there was some public discussion at that time, absolutely.
We did have that. So this isn't new. This is something that we're doing again and again. So thank you for that information.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I will, I think, I will turn it over. First of all, let me answer any legal questions, and I'll hand it over to Tiffany for the public briefing.
If I could just make a point here. You know, the intent of what we passed, and one of the reasons it was brought up last because the prior council was very intimate. We were involved, what, for six years? You know, since the implementation of the Holloway case and everything, it was, and we were a part of, you know, listening to the negotiations as we went through. I was part of the process where, if I recall, as you brought out, you know, they were open to some other things. They were open to a super ward. They were at least open to, you know, what was going on as part of the negotiations. Is that correct?
At that time, that's correct. Again, we haven't had recent conversations.
At the time. And I think, you know, my concern, you know, first of all, I don't think it's ever a bad thing to go to the public, especially if we're going to have to go back to the General Assembly on this. Because going to the public is not only getting their input, but it's also a form of education about how we can do things and do things a little bit better. about how we can do things and do things a little bit better. But the ability, but I guess my concern was throughout the whole process with the court case and also with what happened in the General Assembly. And what happened in the General Assembly, let me put it this way, we were not informed that this was going to be brought forward until we found out the wrong way. Okay? Just saying. Nowhere in this process that brought us here did public input happen. We were talking about, you know, doing it, but then with COVID and everything, there was a number of reasons that the public was not, you know, brought into the discussion. But right now and going forward, and you know, I don't believe the intent is to change the charter or, you know, disrupt the ruling of the court, but we have a 7-3-1 thing in our charter that right now, and, you know, this is the type of thing where, you know, some people are 100% in favor of a 10-1 and other people may want to explore at least talking about an option of a super ward or a ranked choice. So, I guess, you know, the thing is, you know, by bringing the folks to the table and talking about and getting a pulse on, you know, how they, you know, what goes on, you know, that was the intent of what we're trying to do, not to go back, you know, to change it and, you know, and anyway disenfranchise anybody. Now, if we were correct, we had a challenge in coming up with minority-majority districts because we're such a blended community, correct?
Certainly with a single minority, that's correct. You can draw a multi, like an all-total non-white majority district, but we had not been at a point until we had 2020 data to be able to draw, for example, three out of 10.
Right. But, you know, I'm saying, you know, this is simply, if we got to go back to the General Assembly anyway, you know, with recommendation, you know, the thing is soliciting public input. But I think as we go forward, and one of the things I brought up that I would like to talk about at the retreat is even more public engagement on a lot of things that come forward. You know, if we have a really good unsolicited proposal, maybe, you know, I don't personally see anything wrong with, you know, just bringing it out and finding out what the public thinks. But this is all, you know, part of what I envisioned to be enhanced, you know, public engagement. We heard at a meeting also recently, you know, neighbors that were against a particular project saying, boy, it would have been great if we knew more about this. So, but once again, you know, I think, you know, we got tough decisions that we're going to have to be making going forward, and we're going to have to make, you know, strong sense of priorities for any kind of budget stuff that comes, whether it becomes with debt and projects and everything, you know, let's get in the habit of listening to the public and help them, you know, make sure they're part of the process. Okay, Jennifer, and then Sabrina.
You mentioned, so in conjunction with the settlement, there was some measure of public input. Can you describe what that looked like and what results?
There was a move to try to reach a settlement at the time, I think in the context of a ward, super ward system, if I'm remembering correctly. There were two or three different iterations of settlement talks. I don't want to confuse them for you. But at that time, we committed to going down the path of talking with our public about the possibility of a super ward versus what the plaintiffs at that time were seeking, which was the 10-1. And I know that there were some cards mailed and some other things to try to solicit feedback from the public at that time. Whether it satisfies the council's purposes today is for other people to decide, but there was some effort to engage with...
Do you have data?
I don't think we have any type of statistically...
It was education.
Yeah.
I don't think we collect, council member hours, I don't think we collected any data. We're just more getting information out, but I don't think it was a survey where we sought to see statistical analysis on it.
And my suggestion is some of these questions are probably going to answer themselves in Tiffany's portion of the presentation, at least in terms of what we're, or what her office is proposing to do now. And so, we could then go back and compare what was done before to what they're proposing now, if that's useful.
So, I believe there was a public input from the public coming out to speak. We put it on the agenda and the public did come out and they did speak. And I did hear many citizens talk about a 10-1 system, to be clear. But in terms of, just wanted to make sure I understand from what you're saying, Mayor, the feedback, because that's important, the feedback that we gather from this citizen input, you say it's not going to be used to change the system. Is that correct?
We have in place, you know, we have a seven thing, the district system, and I did make it clear the night of the vote, you know, we have a district system that we should honor, you know, from the court case. The disposition is what the other three seats want to do.
So, what are we doing with that public feedback you mentioned? You mentioned that the public feedback that we're going to get, I thought I heard you said it won't change the system.
But once again, we have two other options on the plate, going to a super ward system or a ranked choice system. You know, let's get input on it and then we can move forward. Because we're going to have to go back to the General Assembly.
I thought, oh, okay, I thought I heard you say that we wouldn't use that feedback to change the system. But what I want to make sure we do in getting this community input, that we're transparent because oftentimes, we let people know after the fact, after things happen. This discussion, I don't, do not believe, would have come to light if we had, if the community had not asked to rescind the December 13th resolution that passed. And so, information like this is very important for the public to have. So, when we're doing these citizen input sessions, make sure that we're transparent. First, we, after the election, we should have started out first with some community input, telling people what actually happened to in the electoral process. What we have now, explaining what's the next step. Most folks didn't know that, and that's a key piece of information that people should have known in the very beginning and moving forward. And that's my opinion. And as we continue to lead this effort, I just think we have to be transparent about what type of systems are going to be challenged in court, how much that's going to cost the citizens, since we're talking about, you know, being financially fiscal and responsible. All of those things need to come into play. So, whatever we do, let's be transparent for the people. And I don't think we, and I don't think we did that prior to coming up because there are a lot of factors in play, but we have a chance to do it now.
Right.
Let's move on to public engagement.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We do have a lot of opportunity here for public engagement, and I worked with legal and my team to develop some recommendations where we think we should go within a relatively tight timeline. So, what I'm going to share with you addresses a resolution that was passed December 13th, requesting staff to develop a plan for public engagement. The timeline is, was to immediately start in January through August 18th, which would allow council enough time to determine which direction they wanted to go and possibly look into submitting a referendum question, should they want to. So, based on that timeline, everything that you see today has been put together. There were very specific requirements in the resolution to provide residents multiple avenues to engage with the city on this topic and submit their input. You asked for multiple public briefings and input sessions in both the daytime and evening hours throughout multiple locations in the city and to make the city attorney's office available to attend those and discuss a lot of what was just presented to you from a legal standpoint. We would develop a webpage and a web tool, and that is a great source of information, but we also want to make sure residents can submit their comments online. And then you asked for any other opportunities for input. This initiative for public engagement is a multi-step process. First, it's going to be imperative that we have the resources and support to just create awareness with the public and let them know that you, as a body, are seeking input on this item. Once they know that you're seeking the input, then we need to educate them on the alternative election system options that are legally viable and, of course, what limits and challenges exist in changing the current election system. We would want to survey the community to determine their preferences in an election system, and of course, we want something that I would think would be statistically viable, get input at the district level, and include demographic information. Through that survey, we would identify viable systems that would address their preferences and bring that information to you for you to move forward in the direction that you'd like to. I've outlined here some, I'd say, best practices and different communication tactics for reaching out to voters, and in this case too, not just voters, but future voters who might be coming of age. So, you know, in the past, when we've done community engagement on referendum questions, we've really targeted voters. A lot of the same tactics that you may have been familiar with with our redistricting outreach or the flood protection program education would apply here. We'd, of course, rely heavily on our media partners to help get the word out. We have a database of subscribers that we can email information to the website, both vbgov.com and virginianbeach.gov. We can look at direct mail, which is something we've done in the past, and I bring that up. That would be an additional budget request. It's close to $60,000 for one direct mail to approximately 150,000 households in the city. And then to create additional awareness, we know that a lot of our residents follow the city on our channels, but those who are unengaged, we do like to have the opportunity for paid advertising to reach out to them in, for the redistricting education campaign. Last spring, we spent $50,000 in paid advertising, and then we also spent an additional $141,000 in paid advertising leading up to the election to let them know about the 10-1 system change. We could do that again, so those are options. And of course, direct outreach to a host of stakeholder groups are included here, and I've listed, this is not a comprehensive list, but obviously our neighborhood associations and civic leagues. We have a lot of individuals that have used speakup.com to provide their input already, and we have that database. We have our social media followers. We've got a host of faith-based community partners that are very active and want to be involved and want to help spread the words out to their constituents of how to get involved here with the city on these very important issues. We would need to engage with the Virginia Beach City Public School Board and obviously a variety of multicultural groups and our own city employees that end up being ambassadors and being asked all the time, no matter if they're in their backyard or at an event or at the grocery store, what's going on, they need to be informed to. So, it's very important. Once we've created awareness, there's a lot of tactics here, and I won't run through all of these in terms of educating them, but we would prepare all these tactics and materials, and then we would offer live meetings, which we could do in daytime or evening. We can livestream them, and I'm proposing at least one meeting in each district, and then we'll use social media as well to have those who wouldn't be able to attend in person but could log in and participate online. Once we've done a pretty robust education component, there are a lot of different input tools that we could utilize and deliver back to you for your review. One would be an open-sourced survey with, and I say here with equity mapping data, we do have the ability, when users go to speakupvb.com, to segment out and look at how many responses we're getting by district and by demographic profile. I think that's really important for such an important topic like this. We also, our third-party independent firm that we'd like to partner with is recommending a direct-mail survey. This would also provide you statistically viable information and a second source of research and input in your decision-making to review. We would open up at council meetings the opportunity for public input. We would provide listening sessions for the community, and our partner would provide a qualitative analysis of those public meetings to give you the, a look at those responses. And then I can also provide social media and earned media reports, just so you get a really true look at the sentiment of our community on this topic. I mentioned having a partner. I think it's going to be really important for this very important topic to have that independent, third-party, credible partner who can go out into the community, has experience with a lot of local government entities, and can provide credibility to our residents. And I have selected for this particular public engagement opportunity, the University of Virginia Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service. They have a lot of experience and partners throughout the state. They're very knowledgeable of voting systems, and they also provide the survey and research arm. So collectively, they have put together a proposal for us where they would oversee and conduct all of the community engagement. They would also produce the surveys, both the online open-source survey and the direct-mail survey. They would work with us to craft those questions. I can bring that to you for review. They would also provide legal support, and I think that's really important too. We have an incredible attorney's team here that are subject matter experts in what's brought us here now, but having this third-party independent firm, also being a neutral party, can bring in that legal expertise and provide that knowledge about what voting systems could look like. We've identified a few here today that are pretty common, but there's a lot of options out there that they would be able to work through with our public and have those conversations. And then should council decide to go to referendum and ask our public a question, they would help draft that question, and I think that's really important too, depending on the direction ultimately that you'd like to go. Working with the UVA would be Chris Boynton, representing the city attorney's team, and then Nancy Bloom, who is here today, who oversees our community engagement team. The timeline I've provided here is pretty close to what the University of Virginia has provided to me, and again, it's fast. It's a lot of engagement. They are recommending 12 town hall events, one in each district, and my broadcast team has already started looking, and we're doing this anyway, knowing that we're moving to a ward-district structure, looking for venues that could support big gatherings and town hall events that we could easily livestream. I'll note that the direct-mail survey piece, they would target approximately 4,500 residents and have a response rate of close to 24%. So, that data would be statistically viable. They would be able to look at the open-source data as well to provide you a really comprehensive picture of what the community is saying about this topic.
I just want to point out on this slide, and this slide was drawn from something that we had done earlier, and it came from my office, not from Tiffany, but under the 10-1 system, up there it says require charter change. No, actually, that would require charter change, as we told you.
Yes, it would.
So, it would require charter change too.
Thank you.
Well, any charter change is going to require a super majority, but, you know, presumably, if you do, if you do your public input, you say, your redistricting ordinance, what you want and what you propose for 2024, that may make getting to a, getting to the majority you need in the General Assembly more possible. I don't know, but almost anything you do here is likely going to require a charter change, and I just, because I had failed to catch that before, I wanted to point out that error, and it's my fault.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
A big part of the voter education would be talking about the limitations and challenges. This is a very complex issue, and so having someone who can really break it down so that there's strong understanding is going to be really important. So, throughout this entire community engagement process, we would be doing instant survey feedback, like what is your understanding? Do you feel like you know? We want our residents to have confidence that they know what this issue entails and that they are very confident in what the options are, and I think this is where having a... a third-party partner come in and lead this community engagement initiative is going to be critical, because I do believe that our residents will feel like they have that unbiased third-party they can speak pretty freely to versus city staff. We also feel like this other category, it is really comprehensive, how many voting systems are out there, and simply put, staff, while we know a lot about voting systems, and between Nancy and I, we have spent hours and hours and hours, all looking at cities all over the country that have moved and changed into newer, I'd say, more progressive voting systems. Still, having someone else who's that expert and will provide the community that credibility is really important to us. With that does come a price tag, so I'm being pretty upfront and transparent with you about that. The cost for the Cooper Center is approximately $188,000 for them to provide. That does include the survey, which, that alone is pretty comprehensive. They've outlined that plan. That price does not include either the advertising, should you choose, and our previous council members have instructed staff to do direct-mail paid advertising, we would need to include those fees, so I want you to take that into consideration. But it is, I think, a best-practice community engagement plan, and no matter which direction you choose, at least you can see what the opportunities are and what we can do to engage our public and get the data that you're looking for the right way.
Thank you. Okay, Rosemary, and then Chris.
Kudos to you and Nancy for putting together an amazing communications plan and bringing in Weldon Cooper Center. I mean, they are the best. I mean, they're very well-respected out of UVA, totally independent. I think that gives us huge credibility, like you said, and when they're going to get the research, and so it's going to be non-biased, and I think that's just, it was a fantastic idea to go out for them. So I think it's a great plan, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
To Chris.
Thank you, Tiffany. Some feedback and then a couple of questions. When we look at the 10-1, and we had roughly 100,800 voters come out within District 8, there was a lot of confusion, and we spent, you know, 191,000. We did the best we could in short time, short notice. So when you look at step two, educate residents, I think we should also educate them on the system they just went through, that I was elected under, that Jennifer, Josh, Worth, and Amelia. So I think that's important, not to just jump to 7-3 ranked choice, because you have a large segment of the voting population that didn't understand 10-1. So if we skip over that, they may think that's not an option. You said we spent $60,000 to target 150,000 households, and we were pretty successful. We had 100,000 voters come out. This time, we're looking at roughly $250,000. How many, do we know, do we have a target of how many households? Is that the 4,500 number you pointed out?
That database was provided to us by the voter registrar's office for targeting the number of households, not the total number of voters.
4,500, is that the 4,500 number?
That was the 60,000 for one direct mail. Now, the voter registrar's office also later did a direct-mail piece because the precincts had changed, and we wanted people to know where they would be going to vote, so that was an additional direct-mail item. And then we had the 140,000 in paid advertising to, and we really heavyed up in the fall. It's difficult. We know right now we can get the attention of a consumer fairly more easily this time of year. The closer you get into summer and school schedules and then kids going back to college, that's really a difficult time. We used that time, though, to do online education sessions where Chris would come on. We had a lot of people, you know, Lunch and Learns. We tried to find times that people could participate and learn about the redistricting. We can do something similar. But because of this timeline where you're at, we really need to heavy up and move fast. Yes, Patrick?
Patrick, and then Sabrina.
I think what Councilmember Taylor's talking about, that 4,500 is a UVA survey. That's the amount of people that they like to get to respond for that, so it can be statistically valid.
That was the question I had, though.
Sorry, I was nursing.
I could be wrong on that, the actual numbers and terms, but I think they wanted to at least get around 4,500 people respond.
They're going to mail, too, 150,000 households, and hopefully get back 4,500.
Yep. Okay, and are those voters, non-voters? Because we do have statistics that show we had roughly 101,000 people that engaged in voting, or is that?
Presumably, it's every household, and so then there would be a series of questions, presumably, in the survey that would figure it out, who's answering the question, are they a registered voter, what's their demographic background. And then the first, you know, one of the first questions is, did you experience the 10-1 system, what do you think of it? It's not going to be a high-ball thing at all. And the only thing that is to have the Weldon Cooper Center drafting on the board and to make sure it's neutral and all of the decisions.
And I think, especially this thing that impacts council elections, like the bi-referendum, where you're going after the public, this is just seeing if you all have a general sense of approval for moving forward in this manner. There's going to be a series of check-ins along the way, like draft documents for you all to review and consider and give us feedback on as well. So we're just, basically, what we're seeking is, is council, more or less, okay with moving in this direction from a public engagement standpoint to achieve the tenets that was passed in your resolution. Like, it's probably roughly around a $350,000, $400,000 ask, and we probably will pull that from a combination of fund balance and reserve with the agencies that council directs us in that matter.
Sabrina.
I certainly agree with what Councilmember Taylor said. Want to make sure we do see the benefits of the 10-1 system that's working, that we have now. But also, again, my question is, what are we going to do with this data? This is a high price tag to receive or to, you know, accumulate the data that we're going to have. What are we going to do with it? What's the purpose of it?
Go ahead.
That's what I would like to know before moving forward. Are we going to use it to change the system we currently have, or what are we going to do with it?
Staff will work, the data's going to come from UVA likely, and then UVA is going to present it to the city council, and the council can use that to inform them for the decision that city council wants to make as it relates to referendum or not referendum of the public on changes to the voting system. So the information will be given to council, and then council can use that information as it sees fit in terms of what it wants to bring to the public, if it wants to bring something or not bring something to its public.
So it can be potentially used to go to a referendum, to change the system from what we already have to something else.
It could be used.
I just want to clarify something. When you say from what we already have.
10-1.
Well, we don't really have 10-1. We had 10-1 for 2022, but 10-1 is not the system that's in your charter, nor is there an existing court order anymore that says 10-1 is your system. What we're really telling you is, you don't have a system today. You, the council, get to decide what that system is going to be, and 10-1, the system that was most recently used, is one of those options, but 10-1 is not baked in the cake going forward if nothing else happens. You still have to adopt it.
Right, and I think I already proved that point and asked that earlier, what we have to do to solidify a 10-1 system that we just used in November '22.
Right, I'm just wanting to make plain that no, you don't have an existing system right now. You have the one you just used that a number of you were elected under, and that's a perfectly viable option moving forward, but it's not the system, it's not the status quo, if you will. You have a decision to make.
Yeah, of course, I know that. Thank you.
Okay, Josh, and then Jen.
I just want to say thank you both, Mark and Chris and Tiffany. Really appreciated hearing the background and what your idea of a board was. The reason I wanted to chime in just now is, and respectfully, just something that you said, Mark. You know, we were moving potentially in a process whereby it isn't the council that would be deciding what kind of system we're under. We're, hopefully, if this measure is successful in terms of soliciting the public input that we desire, the public should be the one that chooses what kind of system we're under. And I want to make that differentiation because it is not our job, or at least I don't feel that it is our job as elected leaders, to choose the system under which we're elected. That's in the purview of the public.
Okay, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, the only caveat I would add, Mr. Showman, is that council selects the question that will be put forward in the referendum.
Well, and the referendum is only advisory. Ultimately, you are going to be the ones who listen to the public, but you will pass. This body will be the body that passes the redistricting ordinance, which will district you into 10 districts or seven districts or whatever you do. This council will have to pass that ordinance, and this council, after either a public hearing or a referendum, will have to go to the General Assembly and say, this is what we, the council of the City of Virginia Beach, based on the input we've received from our public, are asking you to put into our charter. But yes, sir, I wasn't meaning to imply the public didn't have a voice, but just that you ultimately are going to be the ones pushing a button.
Jen.
So I'm curious about the timeline of this, because right now, we're in a gray area where we don't have anything legally adopted. So the next, we have a General Assembly election this November, but then the next city council election is 2024.
Correct.
So from a legal perspective, how quickly do we need to move on making a decision about, what's the timeline for deciding 10-1s, whatever option we use?
I believe you have, if you want to ask a referendum question in advance of the 2024 election, your only opportunity to do that is this November. And to get a referendum question on the ballot, you have to determine what that question is and pass a resolution asking the court to call a special election for the referendum in August of this year.
So my hesitation about that, so it's not to not solicit public input, because I think that is important and that's necessary, but my hesitation is the timeline. So it's how quickly this is happening to make such a long, I mean, there's been a lot, we've been electing people for 60 years under this system, so there's a lot of history, there's a lot of knowledge, there's a lot of understanding. We have barely gone through a few months with 10-1, and what this timeline is saying is that we would have maybe five months to get feedback on any change in the system before this has operated for one full year, for the public to then understand, do I like this, do I not like this, before deciding, do I want to go away with this, or do I want something different? So I want public input and engagement, but I have a hard time with how quickly this is moving, because elections are so important, and the merits of the case is that voters have felt disenfranchised under a previous system. So making sure that there's a sense of understanding with how does the 10-1 work, for good or for bad, and giving it time, because what we know is that it elected the most generationally and racially diverse city council in our city's history, and what we know is that it had opened up the pool for candidates, so a lot of new faces are at the table who had otherwise never been engaged in politics before. So this is where I'm having a hard time, where I want public input. I'm not convinced that a referendum in '23 is the way to go.
Jennifer, if I could say, again, you make some very valid points. The referendum question would be advisory, and ultimately, it will come down to council, you know, still go into it. We have the option of, you know, going along with it or not going along with it. There had been some historical times where, you know, referendums have passed, and I believe council, I think, believe it or not, it was on the voting system back in the day, if I'm not mistaken.
You had one in '94 that led to one result, and you reworded the question in '96, and it led to the opposite result.
Yeah, but ultimately, it comes down to a council decision where we would have time to deliberate, but at least at the time, our discussion points, you know, we would have at least a pulse on where, you know, the pulse of the public, but certainly, you know, the existing, the way we voted this past November would certainly be one of the options, and I think that we could feel public that even with this presentation today, all the barriers and all the other considerations, the financial implications, legal implications, you know, have been brought out today, and they would be brought out with the Weldon Cooper. Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify in response to Ms. Rouse that the August date is dependent on having a referendum. If you elect not to have a referendum, if you elect to have a public hearing and then ask the General Assembly to make a change without a referendum, then you've got at least a few more months to deliberate and to reach your answer. So that an August date is driven by a referendum, and that is not entirely required at all.
And so you could get to the point, I mean, you could evaluate, you could evaluate what you've heard in August and decide whether or not you feel like the public has been educated enough and has given you enough feedback that you're comfortable. You're not committed to a referendum question if you proceed with this proposal. It just, it just is designed to get you some information so you can determine whether or not you want to have a referendum, and if so, what that question would be.
And Weldon Cooper.
You're not committed to it.
And Weldon Cooper would only help us design it if we asked him to. We could, certainly.
The referendum question.
Well, ultimately, it's the council's, the council will pass an ordinance stating what the referendum question is. In the past, staff has helped you write that question. We are advocating here that Weldon Cooper would help write the question, because there would not be an appearance of bias one way or the other if an independent third-party from UVA came in to assist with that. But council ultimately has final control of whether, A, there is a referendum, and B, what that question is. It's council's ultimate decision. And then whether or not to, yeah, and then, and again, even after you do that, the response is, whatever the vote is, is purely advisory to you. You're not committed.
You're not bound to it.
You're not committed to it.
Okay, Amelia.
I'm so glad that you asked what you did, because that explains a very important point. We have the third party. We have no obligation, whether we're going to do the referendum or not, will be based on what comes out and the decision by the council. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. The other part, which is different to that, Tiffany, I wanted to ask, I noticed with the Weldon and inclusion being very important to me, you will be having it translated into other languages because of our population as well as disabilities, hearing impaired and so forth. Make sure that is included in the process, because what I'm understanding is, right now, what we have is not legally binding. It happened because of this election. I've talked with some people, and it said, well, we had to come up with one thing right away because the election, and we had already started this process of the 10-1. So we went ahead with that to see also how people were enjoying, are involved with it. But right now, we're going through an educational process, right?
Absolutely.
An educational process will then decide, when it's come back to us, if we are all comfortable with what was put out, whether we just want to stay where we are or look at these options. But right now, by doing this referendum, it is not binding to us to just go with it. It's based on what we're educated from the public, brought back from all inclusion, and then we can sit around the table for a couple of hours and make some decision, yeah, because that's what it will be, make some decisions on that.
From an inclusivity standpoint, that is of great, great importance to the city, especially to the Communications Department. The Cooper Center would be translating their documents, their survey tools, into Spanish and to Gaelic. Also, our publicinput.com tool, which would allow us to livestream all of the town hall meetings in each district, can also be translated for online viewers and transcribed. So it's a great, great feature tool that we can utilize. All the minutes are recorded and can also be translated, and then, of course, we accommodate individuals who have special requirements upon their request, and we would work with the clerk to make sure that would happen.
I want to applaud you on how you ran this last election, because people were wondering whether we're in District 4, District 5, but every day on Channel 45 or 48, you would come on to explain it. You were constantly sending. You would constantly send people, and that made a difference in people feeling comfortable to come out.
Thank you. I do think the, in addition to our earned media strategy, and I want to thank our media partners publicly, because they are, they're there for us when we need them to get the word out, and I appreciate their support, and then also our, our advertising to reach those who are unengaged, and, and utilize a lot of different channels, Spanish radio. You know, we, we really looked across the board to reach as many people as we could with the budget that was allocated. I understand there'll be two council liaisons if this does move forward, that would be assigned, to work very closely with my team on this initiative, and those would be things that we would be able to discuss and go into more detail about to make sure we're representing our community.
Sandra?
They said there'll be 12 town halls?
That is what the University of Virginia suggested as part of their proposal.
So we have 10 districts. Where would the overlap come from?
Nancy and I were talking about that today. You know, there's obviously room to go back and just have 10, but if we provide two additional dates or locations, that gives individuals who maybe couldn't meet their district event another alternative location. We could do that here at City Hall, or the Convention Center, or a, a bigger public forum. If the council liaisons decide they just want 10, we can go back and negotiate those details with the University of Virginia. I know in, in other efforts, and we looked at a lot of other cities who have gone through voting system changes, and they've conducted 30, 40 town halls. So, you know, again, we have a very limited amount of time, and we want to maximize that time. So we felt comfortable with 12, and maybe some are in-person only, or some are virtual, but if I could make all of them available online, that would be great.
Let me just add, could we, I know City Hall and the Convention Center could be possible locations, but could we also think about, because most folks don't come to City Hall. Most folks don't go to the Convention Center. That was an issue with the pandemic and, you know, so we might want to look at some other areas where we know people, it's easily accessible. And they can get there and participate.
I have, I've worked with our team, and I want to thank Micah, who you see kind of helping out with the microphones. He has done a lot of research on facilities and what would be the best, from a, especially from an AV standpoint, and live streaming and capacity and spacing. And so I can share that information with the council, so they can have a look at the different locations that we're considering.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just, like, close out quickly and get moving. I think what we, ultimate goal is for us, not to look at radical change, but enhancement to a system and improve it. And get to a system where, hey, with 460, I think, I saw the figure there, 465,000 people in Virginia Beach right now, we're certainly not going to have consensus, but with a significant majority, you know, feel like they were part of a process. And that way, try to get to as much as a win-win as we possibly can. With that, thank you. Great stuff. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dehaney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our planning staff will come and present to our pending planning items for the meeting that's going to come up on February 3rd, I think, your first voting meeting in February.
February 7th.
February 7th.
188 to UVA. 60. And then Patrick added another 50 to it to make it three.
I don't think they are.
It's not you. I think it's the heat in this room and the debate. Yeah, it's not you.
My sarcasm technique is not particularly accurate.
Well, thank you, Stephanie.
Do you want to have a referendum?
And now, I think our program is really hard to go back.
But if you don't do that, what happens?
If you don't do that, you just have to do something probably before the 24 General Assemblies.
So that gives you another four months.
All right, planning.
Oh, I think I brought that out here.
Sorry.
But you already received this.
School board didn't receive a more diverse school board.
Yeah, they're good.
I think they lost them.
Sharon Felton?
They had a good CP.
Didn't do the same there than here. It's the will of the voters. I think it's the quality of the candidates, ultimately. It's the quality, yeah. I didn't know, you're in one of the three minority majorities. I forgot that seven, seven is one of the primaries.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to declare an official short break. You know, for circumstances beyond our control, but nonetheless, okay?
And then you still have packets for them. Thank you for being there. I'm going to text you quickly the real dress code information.
Channel is zoning, Scott was playing.
Hey, Mark.
You're under. Do this the right way.
You did his neighbor.
Council members, how are you?
Good, I'm good. You know, well, we're all in great shape, because Kathy and I have crazy faces, so I'll be in computers and show you.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm just going to make a quick introduction today. Ms. Kaitlin Alcock, who is our interim planning administrator, is going to review your February 7th planning items, and we'll be here to take any questions.
Thanks, Kathy. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. As Kathy said, my name is Kaitlin Alcock, and I'll be giving you just a quick overview of the planning items scheduled for your February 7th council meeting. So there are a total of eight items on your agenda for the 7th, one of which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance related to ice vending machines. And that's just the remaining items there. So as I mentioned, item one is an ordinance to amend Section 901 of the city zoning ordinance pertaining to ice vending machines. The proposed amendment is sponsored by Vice Mayor Wilson and is in response to unsolicited requests to operate ice vending machines within the city. These machines are standalone units that both manufacture and vend ice, providing flexibility to customers, enabling them to dispense ice directly into a cooler as opposed to going into a store. The ordinance, as it is currently written, does not permit the use in any zoning district. This amendment is proposing to permit ice vending machines as an accessory use to shopping centers subject to specific conditions. This amendment would permit ice vending machines in the B2, B3, and B4 zoning districts as an accessory use to shopping centers with at least 60,000 square feet of retail space. The use could also be considered in the OR district through the alternative compliance process. The amendment does, however, prohibit the use within any historic and cultural district, including the historic Kempsville area overlay district. Staff had initially proposed to limit the use to larger shopping centers with a minimum square footage of 80,000 square feet of retail space. However, that limited the number of qualifying sites to 72. At the request of the Planning Commission, staff reduced the size to 60,000 square feet, which increased the number of qualifying sites from 72 to 183. The ordinance proposes to limit these uses to one per shopping center and requires a 100-foot setback from all residential or apartment districts, as well as any residential uses due to the noise associated with the units. The ordinance would also require that all mechanical equipment be screened from view and that would limit signage to two sides of the unit with a maximum of 20 square feet of signage per side. There is no known opposition to the request. Staff did, however, receive a request following the Planning Commission hearing asking that the minimum height be increased to 18 feet. Based on staff's initial research of the industry standard, the ordinance, as it is currently proposed, would limit the overall size of the units to 250 square feet with a maximum height of 15 feet. However, staff does not foresee any issue increasing the height to 18 feet should council so desire. Sure. Minimum of 60,000 square feet. Correct. All right. Item two is a subdivision variance request to subdivide two existing lots into three single-family lots along Lord Felton Lane. A subdivision variance request is needed as the existing right-of-way width is only 16 feet, where the ordinance requires a minimum width of 24 feet. The two existing lots were created by deed in 1951 prior to the adoption of the subdivision regulations. Lot B1 is developed with a single-family dwelling that will remain, while lot B2 is currently vacant and is proposed to be the future site of two single-family dwellings. Except for right-of-way width, the proposed lots do meet the minimum dimensional standards for property-zoned R40 residential. Existing conditions do show a portion of the Lord Felton Lane pavement is currently located on the applicant's property. To remedy this, staff recommends as a condition of the approval that a four-foot-wide right-of-way reservation be reserved for future dedication along the entire length of Lord Felton Lane that fronts the proposed lots. In staff's view, the proposal meets the criteria of Section 9.3 of the ordinance for a variance to be granted. These properties and the substandard width of Lord Felton Lane were established prior to the adoption of the subdivision regulations. Strict application of the ordinance produces an undue hardship as requiring the widening of Lord Felton Lane would hinder the lot's ability to meet the minimum dimensional standards. Since Lord Felton Lane has existed in its current condition for many years without incident, and since the city does not have any plans to widen or otherwise improve Lord Felton Lane, staff is supportive of the requested deviation. Once subdivided, the proposed lots will not be out of character with the surrounding area. These properties are located in the Lakeview Park, where many of the lots and streets are substandard according to today's standards, as they were also established prior to the subdivision regulations. The submitted renderings, which you see here, show the future dwellings to be of high-quality materials consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the application. All right. Item three is a request for a conditional use permit for a communication tower on an R10 zone parcel located at 568 Lynn Haven Road, just east of Kings Grant Elementary School and south of the Lynn Haven Baseball Complex. The nearly 26,000-square-foot parcel is currently developed with a Dominion substation, which is proposed to remain. The applicant is proposing to construct a 125-foot monopine tower with a five-foot lightning rod for an overall height of 130 feet. The outdoor cabinets and equipment will be located within a 40-foot-by-50-foot chain-link fence compound within a 2,500-square-foot lease area. As required by Section 232 of the zoning ordinance, the proposed tower will meet the 50-foot minimum side and rear setbacks, as well as the 50-foot minimum street setback. While not required, the applicant did perform a balloon test and provided photo simulations. Due to the tower's close proximity to residential properties, staff did encourage the applicant to change their original monopole design into a monopine tower. The monopine tower will be painted a dark brown with green branches to blend into the existing mature trees on site. Staff is recommending approval of the request as the monopine tower meets all of the requirements of Section 232 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant was diligent in contacting adjacent property owners and sent notification to over 60 residents informing them of the request and inviting them to a community meeting, which was held on December 20, 2022. Only one person attended that meeting and was opposed to the tower, stating concerns related to possible health effects that could impact surrounding property owners. There was also one registered speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing, who stated similar concerns related to the health impacts and the tower's close proximity to residences. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this application as well. Yes?
Yes. So, trying to understand the regulations around communications towers. In some instances, like with 5G, the city has no jurisdiction, no influence on where the locations of the poles go. But in this case, we do? Can anyone be able to describe to me what the difference is? And also, so that's one question. Let me start with that one. Have a follow-up.
I do believe, and I'm not entirely sure, but I think that's the difference between small cell versus kind of your larger communication towers.
With small cell, we have no influence in jurisdiction. But with the larger ones, it does the same. Do you know if this, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. If you don't know the answer, it's okay. I'm sure we can follow up and get the answer. Do you know, is it the same technology running through the towers?
That I'm not sure, but I'll get you a definitive answer for both questions.
It's very unclear, and this is, lies with the General Assembly have made these decisions about where local jurisdiction and authority begins and ends around these towers. And it has an impact on our neighborhoods. And so, that's one question. It looks like Mr. Adams has something to say about it. I do still have another.
Michael, you've got to learn how to express yourself.
I've never had a problem with that.
You hold everything in. It's amazing.
So Councilmember first, and I was going to wait until she was done to say this, but first, I just want to, it's always great when we see when we see our young professionals, and Caitlin's young compared to me. But it's always great to see our young professionals step up. And boy, isn't she doing a great job today? In her first moment and in front of you all. And so, I would have waited to the end to commend her. But on this topic specifically, our resident expert is Deb Bryant, who's in Richmond right now. And going back to when she was on Mark's team, she has a long tenure in this space. And so, I don't want us to misspeak in this moment to the extent that it's acceptable to you. If we could wait for her to finish this General Assembly session and get home, she could speak to this with much greater detail than my team could in the moment, just given her experience.
Is this on city property?
No, ma'am, this is a private site.
Okay, so they have the right to do it on city property, Michael. I write, I mean.
So.
That's one big difference.
That's one big difference. They can do it on city, in the city right-of-way. But this is on private property. And so, they're asking for a CUP in order to establish this, to create this on private property. And presumably, they get some kind of revenue generated by placing it on private property.
Generally, there's a lease rate, yes, sir.
We'll get the city, we'll get the council right up in a future Friday package before you vote on this.
Yeah, I have more, but for the sake, in deference to what you said. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You're doing a great job, and I look forward to. Thank you very much for receiving those answers and asking you more questions.
No problem at all. It's what I signed up for. All right. So moving on to item four. It is a request for a change in nonconformity to expand an existing nonconforming secondary dwelling. The property located at 10245th Street currently has two nonconforming dwellings on the site. The primary dwelling is known as 102A45th Street, and the secondary dwelling, located at the rear of the property, is known as 102B45th Street and is the subject of this request. The property is located within the Cavalier Shores National Register Historic District. The area was developed in the 1920s and 1930s when it was common to construct a small guest house or cottage at the rear of the property, as is the case with the subject property, as well as is common within the overall Cavalier Shores neighborhood. This property and the Cavalier Shores neighborhood was developed prior to the adoption of the city zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking a change in nonconformity to renovate the secondary dwelling to include the enclosure of an exterior wood stair and the expansion of an existing second story to span the full width of the first floor. The enclosure of the exterior stair will increase the footprint of the guest house by 40 square feet, and the second-story addition will increase the size of the second floor from 130 to 315 square feet. Several nonconformities do exist currently on the site, including encroachments into the front, side, and rear yard setbacks. No further encroachments are proposed with this application, but the applicant is requesting deviations to the setbacks as a part of this request. The existing development also exceeds the maximum lot coverage requirement for property-zoned R7.5. In its current legally nonconforming state, the parcel has a lot coverage of 37%, and the applicant is proposing to increase this coverage to 38% with this request. Staff is supportive of the request and finds the design to be compatible with the character of the primary dwelling and the Cavalier Shores neighborhood as a whole. While the proposed alteration will increase the amount of livable square footage, the number of bedrooms is proposed to remain the same. As such, there is no increase in traffic anticipated. The applicant was diligent in reaching out to neighbors and received five letters of support, one of which was from the North Virginia Beach Civic League Zoning and Land Use Subcommittee. There is no known opposition to the request, and Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application. Item five is a conditional use permit request for an assembly use for property located at 701 South Military Highway, Suite F. The applicant is proposing to operate an alcohol- and tobacco-free venue within an existing 1,700-square-foot suite in the River Shores Office Park. This will include collecting a cover charge and hosting events such as live music, open-mic nights, and comedy shows. No alcoholic beverages will be sold or consumed on the site, and the venue is not intended to provide a place for dancing. And these distinctions are important when trying to determine how to classify the use and why it's classified as an assembly use rather than a bar or a nightclub. The applicant does intend to soundproof the interior of the site to mitigate any noise that could affect adjacent property owners. Proposed hours of operation are Tuesday through Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Fridays and Saturdays from 4:00 p.m. to midnight. There is sufficient parking on the site, and the applicant is not proposing to do any exterior modifications to the building. The applicant did provide a petition of support with a total of 37 signatures, including signatures from two current tenants of the River Shores Office Park. Staff does note that many of the signatures did come from the Greater Hampton Roads area or lack specific address information. At the Planning Commission hearing, one speaker did speak in opposition to the request, citing concerns about noise impacts on the adjacent condominium development. The Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the application. Item six is a request for a subdivision variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations. The parcel is located at 3536 Boyd Road within the Princess Anne Plaza neighborhood. These parcels were platted in 1952 prior to the adoption of the city's subdivision regulations. The existing single-family dwelling, constructed in 1961, was built over the property line. The applicant is seeking a deviation from Section 4.4B in order to construct a new single-family dwelling on the proposed Lot 110A. All dimensional requirements for R7.5 have been met, with the exception of lot width requirement for Lot 110A. The minimum required street frontage is met. However, it's important to note that the minimum lot width requirement is measured at that front yard setback. And so, you can see there, there's a proposed jog in the lot line, and so, that's what's causing the deficiency there, and it's short 12 feet in lot width. Without that jog in the property line, Lot 110A would be short in the minimum lot area requirement for an R7.5 zoning lot. The proposal includes a one-story, single-family dwelling with an attached garage. The exterior building materials include board-and-batten siding with cultured stone accents, a combination of shingles and metal roofing. The proposal to reconfigure the lot line will allow for the existing residence to be maintained while still meeting proper setbacks and allow a new residence to be complementary to the neighborhood to be constructed on the adjacent lot. There is no known opposition to the request, and the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application. Item seven is a request for a modification of proffers for property located at 1925 Fisher Arch, better known as Anderson's. This site was conditionally rezoned from AG1 to Conditional B2 in 2014. The applicant is requesting to amend proffer one from the 2014 conditional rezoning to update the conceptual plan to include an outdoor seating area and two storage units. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the applicant did expand the outdoor area to include outdoor dining in order for the business to continue operating. Since the outdoor dining area and storage units were not shown on that proffered conceptual plan, a modification of proffers is required. The 2,100-square-foot outdoor area serves as a flex space for additional seating for the existing restaurant on site. This outdoor area consists of artificial turf, a six-foot-tall privacy fence, speakers, and tents. The storage units are used to store gardening tools and other supplies and consist of green metal roofing, beige metal sides, and a white overhead door. Again, there's no known opposition to the request, and Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application. The final item for consideration is a conditional use permit for a residential kennel located at 5433 Hunt Club Drive. This site is located in the Huntington Estates neighborhood on a 7,500-square-foot lot. More specifically, the applicant is requesting the CUP for a residential kennel for up to 10 dogs. The applicant currently has three companion dogs and would like the ability to house another seven dogs on site as a part of the Legacy Haven Animal Rescue. The applicant rehabilitates, rescues, and provides hospice care for dogs. According to the applicant, the majority of the dogs spend an average of one year under the applicant's care, but the length of time is dependent on the dog's process to either be rehomed or to transition. All dogs will be housed inside of the single-family dwelling. There are no outdoor kennels proposed, and animals are not permitted to be dropped off at the site. According to the animal control report, there was a complaint in 2018 regarding the number of dogs on site. When animal control visited the site, they did note a total of seven dogs on the property, three of which were personal dogs, and then seven, sorry, excuse me, four were associated with the rescue. Another complaint was made in 2022 related to the number of dogs on the property, as well as overall poor living conditions. When animal control visited, they did note a total of 15 dogs on the site, and based on the conditions of the dogs and the overall unsanitary conditions, they did file an animal cruelty report. Animal control officers did advise the applicant of the need to clean up the premises, get all dogs up to date on their vaccinations, and general overall vet care. The applicant was also made aware of the need for a CUP since there were more than four dogs on the premises. Over the course of numerous follow-up visits over the next few months, animal control did note that five of the dogs had either been transferred or euthanized. The premises had been cleaned. Many of the dogs had gained weight and were undergoing various medical treatments, and that the applicant was working diligently to schedule vet appointments for the animals. At the time of their last visit in June of 2022, there were still 10 dogs on the property. Planning staff was made aware of the issue in September of 2022 when a zoning inspection was conducted due to a complaint from a neighbor. During that inspection, it was noted that there were 10 dogs on the site, and excessive barking could be heard from the outside. The inspector again advised the owner of the need for a CUP for a residential kennel if there were more than four dogs over six months in age on the property at any one time. Staff has received a total of two letters of support and six letters in opposition for this request. The letters of opposition came from adjacent neighbors noting a variety of concerns, including excessive barking, which could be heard both indoors and outdoors, the smell of dog waste, debris in the front yard, and then just generally the lot size being too small to accommodate 10 dogs. One speaker did speak in opposition of the application at the Planning Commission hearing, noting similar concerns related to noise, cleanliness, and odor. Given the history of the site and then the time it took for the applicant to file the CUP, staff is recommending denial of the application. At the January hearing, Planning Commission also voted unanimously to recommend denial. Should council choose to approve the application, staff has drafted conditions, which were provided in the staff report. Condition one would limit the number of dogs on site to five, and staff arrived at this decision in looking at a CUP for a residential kennel that was approved on a neighboring site back in 2006. For that application, the lot size was 10,000 square feet, and the applicant was approved for a total of seven dogs. So since this is a smaller lot, staff figured five would be a comfortable number. So that does conclude my briefing, and if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Any questions, Michael? Intriguing, but much more complete with context, knowing that staff and planning recommend denial. The animal cruelty, and you may or may not be able to prepare to talk about this, but the animal cruelty report that was issued, will we receive a copy of that in the materials that are shared with us before the council meeting?
Yes, and I do have a copy here, which I can circulate, or we can send copies to all the members.
Both, I think. Because I'm curious a little bit more about what the nature of the report was, and also, what constitutes clearing a report? These are new terms for me, because I'm not intimately involved with animal control, of course. But I'm just curious what that process looks like and what the nature of the offenses.
Yeah, and there's definitely more detail in the report, and then they do provide a brief summary of each time they made follow-up visits and kind of what their observations were during those visits.
Yeah, that would be very helpful to receive. Very interesting. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks a bunch. Appreciate it. All right. At this point, any council discussions, comments? Rosemary, and then Amelia, and then Barbara.
Yes, I wanted to give everybody an update on the South Side Network Authority. We had a very exciting meeting on Friday. Councilwoman Andrea McClellan was elected as the new chair, and I was elected as the new vice chair. And we signed an agreement with GTS, one of our very admired local companies, to do the marketing, and they're going to take care of the maintenance and all of that. They're going to be able to lease 96 strands of fiber. Ability to be able to get more later on. What this means is that they will pay the authority $2 million a year for these strands, and they will take care of all of the maintenance, which is about, estimated to be about $800,000 a year. So this was a really big win. And one of the other things that I really like about GTS is they are an authority in cybersecurity. And so, that should really help protect the ring. And this is something that we can all be really proud of. With, people always say, we need to do more things with regionalism. Well, this is a great regional project. They're working on. They're working on some grants that possibly could extend over to the peninsula, so we're waiting to hear about that. So this is, it was a really big day for us with the Southside Network Authority.
Thank you. Great. Next, who's on the queue?
I'm on the queue.
Amelia, and then Barbara.
Yes, I just wanted to mention and attended, well, three councils. I'll let you do the last one, Josh. Three council liaisons. I went over to the housing and jotted down a few things that the board was briefed on the housing study. Information will be sent to city council, and the board will receive exact dates afterwards. The tentative time period is the end of January through February 2023. The city has hired Mel Jones with the Virginia Center for Housing Research at Virginia Tech as their consultant. And there was a nice presentation about, by Sharon Schuff, about Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach multi-family housing market rate. And the last thing that was shared, too, was all multi-family units with BBCSC scattered site properties updated from 12/30/2022 and presented to the Housing Advisory Board on 1/9/2023. And additionally, I called on, from Franklin Johnson Group, Chris McKee, to tell us the benefit, what was the mutual benefits to what they did with the tax credits and so forth, and was very interesting. The other group I went to was the Minority Business Council. It was quite a lot of people attending it. And Mike Monday with Public Works presented the Flood Protection Program, their projects and schedule, and discussed possible opportunities for that forward swim. And then they discussed their NBC Fall Festival Expo, which was called a Spectrum of Opportunities and a Prism of Possibilities. That was held November 10th. They had over 200 participants and exhibitors, including 13 city of Virginia Beach department divisions, and they're gearing up for their upcoming spring event, which will focus on construction and will be held in April or May of this year. It was very interesting. We're able to share with them about District Four. They wanted to know, because they are now part of my district, so we shared that information. And then we also had the Virginia Beach Public School System knew, I think she's Vice Director for Equity, and she spoke about opportunities coming up. It was really good. And Josh, we went to one today.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. We both attended the Central Business District Association's first quarterly board meeting today, and Amelia and I both serve as co-liaisones because Town Center Pembroke SGA encompasses both District Eight and Nine. Steve McNulty, who many of you may know from Town Bank, was elected to serve as president. He succeeded Bert Poole. And Dan Heewall was elected to serve as vice president. And we spoke about some of their strategic priorities to include the I-264 and its interchange, support for the Virginia Beach Trail, the evolution of the Cleveland Street Corridor, and he shared with us some information about last night on the town, which was the New Year Celebration in Town Center that I attended along with Taylor Adams. And that was very successful despite the weather, and we hosted Lupe Fiasco in Town Center, and everybody seemed to enjoy themselves. So it was a nice update from there.
Thank you, Barbara.
Just two items. Just before Christmas, the only, only still remaining at that time, councilperson who was a part of the first council that met 60 years ago, passed away, Earl Tebault. He was the city council representative for the Blackwater Borough at that time, and I think it would be very appropriate if the mayor would have a proclamation for the family to let them know how much we appreciate. I just think in terms of those people sitting around the table 60 years ago with the type of decisions they were having to make at this time, quite, quite something. But Mr. Tebault was a great member of the community for many years, and I think that is pretty significant. The other issue may be too late for us to do anything about. I should have brought it up before, but in thinking about our retreat, it just seemed to me that since live streaming is so available now, that it would have been good if we could have planned to have our retreat livestream if it's not too late. But I think with us talking about the priorities that we're going to set for the next year, having our public as much involved and aware would be good, if that's possible, and if you would even want to consider it.
Yeah, let's explore the possibilities. Anybody have, Michael? And then Patrick, any comment?
Mayor, if that's something council wants to do, and we need to know today because the retreat's next week, and we got to get with the AP contractor with the CDP.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea. Does anybody object? Yeah, yeah, we're talking about getting the public engaged. Let them see what we do. All right. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share that the May 31 Memorial Committee met recently, and just provide a brief update to the council on where we are with that, if it will be okay, because particularly a number of new members. It may even be a good idea, now that I'm thinking about it, to have a briefing for the council about where we stand in that process, to bring everybody up to speed and on the same page. But it's really a remarkable group of citizens who are involved in determining a path forward with lots of community engagement about establishing a permanent memorial for victims of May 31st, and for those who were impacted by the events of May 31st. But the committee is doing quiet but very, very meaningful work to advance this cause toward establishing a permanent memorial, including recently released a request for qualifications, and the committee selected two firms to make presentations to the committee, which they did very recently. And then those two firms will be bringing, they met with the committee, they're meeting with the family members and members of the community, and they're going to bring back in the next few months conceptual plans and renderings for what the, for what the permanent memorial would look like and feel like. And then the committee will seek lots of public input about, around these concepts, and then ultimately, with lots of public engagement and feedback from the families and those who were affected, will make a selection. So I think one of the things that I think is important for this council to keep an eye on is making sure that we leave room to fully fund this initiative as soon as possible so that when there is a final plan determined, again, with lots of community engagement, that we'll be in a position to establish that permanent memorial as quickly as possible in honor of all those who lost their lives on that day, and recognition of the impact that it's had on our community, staff members, individuals throughout our community and throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so I just think it's important that the news isn't releasing reports on every step of this process, but it's a comprehensive process. And Mr. Duhini, I really want to applaud all of the folks on your team who are shepherding this process of providing staff support. Each and every meeting, there are a variety of departments represented, and I think that reflects the seriousness with which you and your colleagues take this endeavor, and also the personal investment they have in it. And so, again, I just want to applaud, and I just want to thank again the committee members. This is really important, meaningful, and impactful work, and I think it's important that I took this opportunity to share with you an update on the process and what to expect in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael, you know, a little while ago, remarkable gentleman, his name is Melvin Wallard. His son, Michael, you know, is up for a Grammy, it's musical family. And he sent a copy of, to me, a beautiful rendition of a tribute in song that I would like to get, you know, to you. As a matter of fact, I think I'll have it sent to everybody, you know, the link. That was really thoughtful, and I'll tell you what, extremely well done. But once again, I just wanted to wait, and Patrick, I think you heard it, you know, a while ago. Yeah, but it's really a professionally done, you know, thing. The guy teaches HVAC at, you know, a type water community, but he is, it was, and the words bring tears to you. But I'm going to send it to everybody, okay?
That'd be great, and I'm sure the committee members would love to.
Yeah, and then, you know, let them decide before we really want to, we want to make sure they're in the loop and okay with it. Yeah, Josh?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I guess, let members of council know who may not have already known, and certainly for the benefit of the members of the public watching, there was a news report about a fairly substantial sewer pipe that broke along Shore Drive that leaved apparently 150,000 gallons of sewage into the Wind Haven. I think that news report came out on Friday in the evening, and I sent a request to our community engagement team to hopefully provide for us an update and a point of contact. But because of the holiday and the timing of the sewage spill, we don't have anything yet, but I did want the members of council to know and members of the public that it's something that we're, both Councilman Taylor and I, and I'm sure the rest of us, are extremely concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
All right, of course. Lastly, I had an opportunity to sit down with Mayor Dyer today, and I expressed, I think, a desire for next year as a city to do something for the MLK holiday. I did hear from people in the community that wanted more, and so I just wanted to share that hopefully next year we'll be able to do a little bit of community engagement and really honor the life of Dr. King.
Yeah, and, you know, I, you know, wholeheartedly concur with that, you know, our council was the first to come out, and you make Juneteenth a paid holiday, and we helped, along with Amelia and Sabrina, with Team Lamb to have a very, very successful event for Juneteenth, which hopefully now will be a legacy, you know, type of that. I, you know, there was a, I participated in the taping with the Urban League with Gil Brandt and, you know, a number of other folks that did it, but they decided to make it virtual, you know, and we have that at the thing. Yeah. And, you know, so, but once again, I think, you know, I think you're spot on, and that would be great. And then do me a favor, also bring up your suggestion today about the housing task force or work that you want to do. You know, we have people of like Amelia and Chris of Passion, and a lot of folks, and Aaron was that way about affordable housing for people. So, you know, why don't you go ahead and bring that forward?
Yes, I have reached out to Deputy City Manager Chandler and want to work through the Housing Advisory Board and that line to do a, host a Affordable Housing Summit so that we can continue to educate the public on really our current state of affordable housing, get them some facts, kind of define what affordable housing looks like in our region, in our area, and then work with staff to put on a small summit that we can engage the public and hopefully produce some solutions or some ideas to improve the landscape of affordable housing in the city.
And, you know, just to know, and the Hampton Roads Planning Commission, and then also with the run for the military bases, you know, that we deal with affordable housing and things, things like affordable housing, daycare, you know, and helping spouses find jobs and everything are all part of another matrix that is so vital to our community. And, you know, as we talk about with broadband, that we, hopefully are going to be into job creation. I'm telling anybody that will listen, friends don't let their friends' kids move to Northern Virginia. We'll get you a job here. But the point is, we got to have housing for, and then also maybe work on some transportation issues and things. So, you know, I applaud the effort, you know, going on with housing and everything, and, you know, I really think that we had, we could take a true leadership role in this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And this has come up, and I think we all wanted to move the needle on this and want to move the needle, and my suggestion is that we move away from saying affordable housing, and we say workforce housing. We have city employees that can't afford to live in our own cities. We can't, our firemen, our police officers, our nurses, our teachers, they can't live in our own city. So it's not the stigma of affordable housing, it's workforce housing. It's our citizens, it's our city employees that need to find housing. So I think that last, last year when we talked about that, we need to really capitalize on this and move the ball forward.
That was the original name of the Housing Advisory, it was the Workforce Housing Advisory Board, and because there was always such a stigma with affordable, because people thought it was, you know, Section Eight, and they didn't want it next to them. So we, we were really trying, we've been trying to do that for a long time, is to use the word workforce.
Yeah, and I think maybe during the retreat, we could really establish this as a true priority, you know, kind of like we did with, you know, the stormwater and sea level and public safety and things like that. So, you know, this is something that, let's bring it forward and get it done. Yeah, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, in regard to our staff, one last thing, not to enter into your deliberations. Well, remember, council did authorize us to enter into a contract with Virginia Tech, and Virginia Tech is in the process of starting to put together their community engagement plan. So this ties in perfectly with that, you know, we'll love to discuss a way to incorporate your feedback into that as we move forward with the next steps. And remember, the goal with that was for them to engage the community and have in multiple different districts, and also discuss with city council members what their findings and their information are, the goals of presenting recommendations for council to consider in July, August of next year.
That'd be great.
Of this year, sorry.
Amelia, please.
I couldn't stop without including that when we did the Juneteenth, like you said, we had, the city was the first to do it as a page, and also, two groups were very important, the Virginia Beach Cultural.
Yep.
Arts and Humanities, that started with a smaller, and then the Virginia African-American Culture Center kind of helped lead what happened with Team Lamb. So I wanted to make sure that was brought in.
No, I'll tell you what, we're moving in the right direction. Thank you. Okay, how about where we, general review?
Yes, so there are, so far, other than the one speaker, there's only three items that were pulled, and that's under Ordinance and Resolutions, number two. Under Planning, number one. And number nine. It's like it's all about the District Six today, all about District Six. So under Ordinance and Resolutions, does anyone have any issues with the other items besides number two?
I do just have a question about the item, I don't know what number it is, that is the grant from the state regarding the Innovation Park, and it's just that it's timely. I have a question. It says that this, we've got this grant for site due diligence, and I hope that this is going to answer some questions that I had raised after we got this Public Works CIP notice back in December, and this item that said that the Virginia Beach Innovation Park infrastructure, the road for the Hudome Way, increased scope because of inflation, but also due to poor soils found and stormwater requirements. The cost apparently went from $6 million, and now we need an additional $10 and a half million. And I worry about the soils in that area. I know it's poorly drained, I know that whole area is poorly drained, we've got that pretty tied down historically. And so I hope that this new diligence is going to look again at the cost, because if it's going to cost us a tremendous more amount to develop in that area, we need to know that going in.
That's number four.
I think we have the answer man up there.
Ms. Hindley pretty much summed it up. That's, we're grateful that we're able to take advantage of some of the Go Virginia money that the governor's been appropriating for exactly this purpose, to help us better understand the site and ensure that we can deliver on the public's expectation.
But like I say, I hope we can, can look again, because I know the whole area, I've got a feeling a lot of that land is what the Corps calls prior converted wetland. got a feeling a lot of that land is what Core calls prior converted wetlands, and we really need to look at what we've got there before we go any further, and I hope we get up with that early on so we will know what we've got going forward. I do look at our ITA study, and I think it's a wonderful plan. It does caution about this area, and so I hope we can, we can visit this very closely because I think going forward with our stormwater, the first thing is to make sure we develop in the right place and not the wrong place. Thank you on that.
Okay, anybody else? Where's...
Vice Mayor, so number 11, where the ramp plan would be under the consent agenda?
Right now, we're only on Ordinance and Resolutions, Jay.
It's coming.
So is everybody okay with Ordinance and Resolutions being consent, except for number two? Under Planning, number two, Nemo United Methodist Church, District Two, Ms. Henley. Number three, Hickman Shops, Ms. Henley.
That's good.
Small one, Beth?
Number four, now that's for deferral, for deferral. Everybody okay with that being a consent for deferral? Sure you are, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Number five, Express Wash Properties Holdings. Gosh, I thought it was all about Bay, Beach, but it looks like it's all about Prince of San.
Oh, that's Prince of San.
Yeah.
It's a big district. Yes, that's all right. We've got another one following that.
Okay, number six, Virginia Power.
That's our favorite offshore wind energy, and they will have a lay-down area at the old Public Air, Fungo Airfield, so thank you for that.
Number seven, Permanent Pictures Tattoo, that's District Five. I haven't heard any issues with it, so as far as I'm concerned, it's a consent. And number eight, Christiana Rogers, Red Mill North, and that's District Seven. Oh, yes. No, no, actually, it's not mine, I'm sorry, it's not mine. And I haven't heard anything, and that's another tattoo for consent. Number nine, we have Speaker. Number 10, Valhallaene LLC in Holland Road, District 10, Denver. And number 11, resolution to adopt and incorporate the Virginia Beach Plan, the ramp mobility plan. Is everybody okay with that? All right.
Okay, good, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions in terms of the scope of such contract, where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining commission or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A29, and that is Project Biltbuckle. In publicly held property, discussion or consideration the acquisition of real property for the public purposes of disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body. Three items in District Two. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding to the specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237-11A8, and that's election system of council. And finally, the personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A1, and that's council appointments of boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Second?
Okay, you could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Berluti?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Rammick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Shulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Louis?
Aye.
Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
If I vote in black and white, you vote for him.
Okay, we are recessed into executive.